This is Elizabeth, just to let you know, we are ready to go when you are.
Wonderful. Good morning, everyone. Today is July 1st, 2020, and the Select Budget Committee will come to order. It is 10:01 a.m., and I'm Teresa Mosqueta, Chair of the Select Budget Committee. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Strauss. Council President Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Juarez.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Morales.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Sawant.
Here.
Chair Mosqueta.
Here, and I believe coming back to Councilmember Strauss.
Councilmember Strauss.
Present, thank you.
A present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Cuz colleagues, we have a long agenda today. Again, this is Session 1 at 10 a.m. Session 2 starts at 2 p.m. Session 1 is devoted to the conversation around progressive revenue, and in the afternoon, Session 2 will be devoted to the 2020 rebalancing package. As you all have seen, the agenda, it is quite lengthy, and we're going to get through as much as we can to make sure that folks also have a short window for a lunch. I want to make sure that we are taking care of ourselves, as we're also trying to take care of the city. If there's no objection, today's agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the agenda is adopted. Colleagues, we have a number of folks signed up to testify. As we mentioned at the beginning, on every meeting, we will have public testimony. Unfortunately, we are probably not going to be able to get through everyone, so I want to thank everyone in advance who has called in to testify. If we are not able to get to you, there is another opportunity to testify at 2 p.m., and we encourage you to do so, or send us your written comments. We do receive those directly from our clerk, and we really appreciate those. On today's agenda, we will have the opportunity to hear from folks for the next 25 minutes, and I encourage folks to try to wrap up. When you hear the chime, there will be a 10-second chimer to let you know that your minute time period is running up. We are continuing to try to make sure that everyone gets a chance to speak, and in doing so, we have tried to divide our public testimony into two parts, at the beginning, at the 10 a.m. session, and the beginning of the 2 p.m. session. Again, the 2 p.m. session sign-up starts at 12 noon, if you would like to sign up for that, or if you didn't get a chance to talk today. I will call on the speakers at one at a ti- I'm sorry, three speakers at a time, in the order which they've registered, and hearing from Seattle residents will be our priority, and then if time permits, we will hear from the remaining speakers. If you get to the end of your time, and you have not had a- if you get to the end of your time, please do hang up and call back into the Listen In line, or listen in at Seattle Channel, or on the online streaming options. You will hear you've been unmuted from our IT folks, that's your cue to start speaking. Thanks so much for all of your time, and for weighing in via this electronic opportunity, so that we can hear from as many people as possible in the public, as we also keep our social distancing practices in place to protect folks from contracting COVID unintentionally. So, here we go. We have the first three speakers that are present are Daniel Kavanaugh, Sean Butterfield, and Don Blakeney. Daniel, good morning.
Hey, my name's Dan. I'm a nursing student and a renter in the Central District, and I'm here to urge the City Council to pass a strong Amazon tax, and to vote yes on the amendments from Councilmembers Sawant to strengthen it. You know, we're facing down the barrel of a gun, of a major economic crisis, right? We just had the largest wave of layoffs in U.S. history, and a massive wave of foreclosures and evictions is on its way, and, you know, people are already feeling the pain. I've talked to thousands of people in my neighborhood, in our protests, and the support in Seattle for a big business tax is overwhelming, overwhelming. We've collected 27,000 signatures in just a few weeks to take tax Amazon to the ballot. People are already feeling the pain, and if anything, people feel like $500 million is not enough. So, you know, no sunset clause, add the Green New Deal, fully fund $500 million, no excuses, have a strong Amazon tax.
Thank you very much. Sean Butterfield, welcome.
District 3, and a member of-
Do you mind starting over, Sean?
Hi, my name- Absolutely. My name is Sean, and I'm a home care aiding District 3, and a member of Socialist Alternative. I'll tell you, when you're out collecting signatures in the wealthier part of Seattle, you get a few people who like to say, "No, thank you. I'm okay." And after a while, that really gets to me, this parade of comfortable, older, white men telling me how okay they are. Yesterday, I finally said, "Listen, sir, I know you're okay. I'm not worried about you. I'm worried about the working class, people of color, struggling to afford the rent at one of the properties you own. I'm worried about my friends' kids who are switching schools every year, while their parents find a place they can afford to live. This isn't about you, so please take a moment to think of someone other than yourself and sign this petition." Well, of course, he didn't, and walked away in a grieved huff, but the QFC standing- QFC employee standing nearby appreciated my words, and they signed. And I'll tell you what, we've got about 27,000 signatures like hers and counting. And far more often, the criticism I hear is that this is not enough, that it doesn't match the scale of the problem we're facing. And they're right, of course, but it's a big first step. The rightness of this movement, of taxing big business to pay for the needs of our communities, especially in this time of crisis, is obvious to anybody who will stop to think about it.
Thank you very much, Sean. Don, good morning.
My name is Don- Good morning, Councilmembers. My name is Don Blakeney, and I'm speaking today on behalf of a coalition of Seattle's business organizations, who represent thousands of companies, and hundreds of thousands of jobs in the city of Seattle. Earlier this morning, we submitted a letter for your consideration that outlined our strong opposition to the legislation before you today. Seattle's current unemployment rate is approaching 14%. 80,000 jobs have been lost in the city of Seattle since March, compared with just 5,000 over the two years during the Great Recession. We urge you to utilize the rainy day fund to sustain basic city services and not fund new programs. Seattle faces its worst economic conditions in nearly 100 years, and together, we must focus on recovery and not taxing the very jobs that are evaporating. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Don. The next three speakers are Alicia Lewis, Will Tostburn, and Katie Gero. Welcome, Alicia.
Hi, my name's Alicia Lewis. I'm active in the Tax Amazon Movement, and while I'm excited this legislation to tax Amazons being reviewed, we should be honest that the only reason this has been brought forward is because of the pressure of our movement, which has collected 27,000 ballot petition signatures in the last month, to tax Amazon for affordable housing, and to create a major jobs program. Since January, thousands have participated in our action conferences, marches, and protests, and over 500 have volunteered with our campaign to phone banks, deliver ballot petitions to their neighbors, and canvass in front of grocery stores. I urge the City Council to stand with our movement and approve all of Councilmembers Sawant's amendments for a strong Amazon tax with no corporate loopholes. If you fail to do so, our movement is prepared to submit our signatures and bring our tax to the ballot. We'll be holding a mass action conference next Wednesday, July 8th, to assess what the Council decides and vote on whether to bring our initiative to the ballot. I urge everyone listening to join. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next person's Will. Welcome, Will.
Hi, thank you, Council. My name is Will Tostburn, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Solid Ground. We're supporting the Jump Start Seattle Plan and additional efforts to maximize progressive revenue for human services and housing. These efforts are a key step in helping Seattle recover and rebuild from a global pandemic, ongoing housing crisis, and embedded systems of racism that continue to stabilize and oppress Seattle communities. Solid Ground's mission, including as an affordable housing provider, is to end poverty, undo racism, and other forms of oppression that cause it. Make sustainable progress in this work, the communities and providers we work in solidarity with must have a significant increase in public resources. Further, the way we raise those resources must come from progressive sources, otherwise we can further the oppression we are aiming to undo. Jump Start Seattle moves us in the right direction. Further, we reject any measures to delay the passage of this plan, including requiring a popular vote. The correct time to increase progressive revenue for housing and human services was years ago.
You can continue.
It is time for us, for you all, the elected leaders of this city, to take meaningful action that will result in change and progress for Seattle's most vulnerable. Thank you.
Hey, thank you so much, Will. Katie Gero, welcome.
Hi, good morning, Councilmembers. Katie Gero, I'm the Deputy Director at MLK Labor. Our organization represents more than 100,000 workers in 150 affiliate unions here in King County. I'm also a member of Labor's Local 242 Construction Union, and both my individual union and the Labor Council have endorsed Jump Start Seattle, and I'm here today to express our overwhelming support for this policy. More than 80% of affiliate unions voted yes to endorse Jump Start. The labor movement is unified in our support for this policy. It's important that our council and our city does not lead with austerity during in the face of an economic recession. I want to thank Councilmember Mosqueta for her deep stakeholder in work that she and her Chief of Staff, Sajil Perik, did, and urge immediate passage of Jump Start. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Katie, and thanks to MLK. Joseph Sergey, Summer Stinson, and Robert Kraschak. Joseph, welcome and good morning.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hello. Okay, my name's Joe. I'm a member of District 6. As a union member and a teacher, I stand here alongside thousands of my union siblings, brothers, and sisters, and as a teacher, I stand here alongside thousands of teachers and school faculty, counselors, custodians, paras, to demand voting today on a strong big business tax of $500 million per year that goes into effect immediately, which is really only a drop in the bucket for these corporations, but would increase the quality of life for working people, especially black people in this city. You know, the movement is tired of performative speeches at BLM rallies with no substance, no concrete demands as how you will help black lives, but today, you have an opportunity to actually vote on a strong Amazon tax to help the people of Seattle. The movement demands that this bill be passed with the amendment put forwards by Shama Sawant, to raise $50 million to build at least 1,000 homes in Central District to combat racist gentrification, and that is a concrete way to say black lives matter. In addition to that, the sunset clause has to go, and by saying that this bill would expire in 2030-
Thank you so much, Summer. Welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Summer Stinson. I'm a homeowner in D6. Seattle faces a huge health and economic crisis in COVID, and due to the gaping wealth divide and systemic racism. The Seattle City Council must pass progressive new revenue and not pass the buck to voters. Pass Jump Start Seattle with no sunset clause, double the revenue, pass tax Amazon, and pass a capital gains. Seattle can also increase investment in by-pocket underserved communities by defunding Seattle Police Department by 50%. Because Mayor Durkin has shown she won't support progressive new revenue, I urge the council to remove Mayor Durkin. Thank you.
Thank you, Summer. Robert, welcome.
And I'm a homeowner in Greenwood- My name's Robert Kraschak, and I'm a homeowner in Greenwood in District 6. I'm speaking to you to urge you to pass strong, bold, progressive tax revenues that are essential to our community in this moment of crisis. Austerity will just add to the harm and devastation our community feel. This is the right time to raise taxes on the richest members of our community, especially given the lead time required to get these revenues collected. We need to be bold here. That means passing amendments to raise the rates. That means passing amendments that eliminate a sunset clause. Being bold means rejecting amendments that would send this to the ballot box. In a crisis as serious as this, it would be inappropriate for the council to abandon its leadership role like that. Being bold means rejecting amendments that exempt nonprofits. Being bold means ensuring some of the funding goes to Black Lives Matter and the Green New Deal by dumping the amendments proposed by Councilmember Sawant. I also urge you all to, at some point, pass a capital gains tax that Councilmember Lewis has proposed. Finally, please defund SPD by at least 50%, and impeach Jenny Durkin, a mayor who not only ignores the community, but retaliates with violence and harassment against those who criticize her. Thank you.
Thank you. I see we've been joined by Daniel Swanson, who was previous. Daniel, you're welcome to speak.
Hi, my name is Daniel Swanson, and I'm a worker and renter in District 4. I'm calling today in support of passing the strongest possible Amazon tax with absolutely no watering down of the current proposed legislation. I believe the tax must raise $500 million rather than the $174 million that is proposed in the Jump Start bill. This should not even be a question when we are talking about building 10,000 homes with $500 million versus 3,000 with the proposed bill. Seattle has been in a housing crisis that will only be exacerbated by the coronavirus pandemic. Choosing an option to build less affordable housing would be a slap in the face to your constituents who struggle to stay housed. The proposed bill must also raise at least $50 million to support Green New Deal jobs program. We need to start enacting Seattle's Green New Deal referendum, and now could not be a more urgent time with record unemployment across the country. We need jobs to improve Seattle's green housing infrastructure. The legislation must also be enacted immediately, and done so with no sunset clause. We have been needing affordable housing investments in the city, and we need them now more than ever in the face of the pandemic and its repercussions. We don't need a sunset clause on affordable housing. We need a sunset on Durkin's austerity budgeting and our-
Thank you so much. The next two are Angie Cassie and Josh Castle.
Good morning, Council. For the record, my name is Angela Hicks-Maxi, the CEO of Tiny Pop Development Center, and a member of Kids First Washington. I'm here in support of Jump Start Seattle, because we need grants. Since COVID-19 arrived, our sanitation costs have skyrocketed. We now have smaller class sizes, which means payroll costs are up and revenue is down. A class that used to have 20 children and two staff now has eight children and three staff. One staff person in each class is constantly cleaning. I've reduced the hours teachers work, but I pay them the same. This is one way I can recognize the essential and stressful work they are doing for their families and our families. We do everything possible to keep the children and staff safe and healthy, but this is expensive and not sustainable. Every grant helps. Please vote yes to Jump Start Seattle. These direct grants for childcare will help us stay in business.
Thank you so much. Josh Castle. Just checking. Josh Castle will be followed by Ava Mens and Matthew Lang. Do we have Josh with us? Oops, sorry, looks like Josh is not here. Ava, welcome back, and then Matthew Lang and Emily MacArthur.
Hi, my name is Eva Metz, and I'm a member of Socialist Alternative. As others have said, it's because of our movement that City Council Democrats are putting forward this watered-down version of our movement's legislation, and City Council absolutely owes it to working people to follow through, vote today with no delay, and no more watering down, but we need more. It's been five years of a homeless state of emergency, so why are Democrats proposing to build a third of the homes that our movement is demanding? Council pledged last year to fund a Green New Deal, so why are Democrats failing to include funds for Green New Deal programs and green jobs we desperately need? There's been a historic uprising for racial justice. Put substance behind the slogan Black Lives Matter, stand with the 220 interfaith clergy who signed on to support, and dedicate funding to stop racist gentrification. Remove the sunset clause, raise the tax of $500 million at an absolute minimum, support Councilmember Sawant's amendments to fund $50 million each for Green New Deal programs, and to fund at least 1,000 new affordable homes in the Central District. Our movement is watching. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew, welcome.
Hi there. My name is Matthew Lang. I'm a leader organizer at the Transit Riders Union and a small business owner in Seattle. I have been able to scrape some relief together on my own, and I'm not- that is, in no small part due to my privileges as a white man. But let's talk about the needs that are in front of us. Talk about the independent work- artists and sex workers that have been left out of grant programs. Let's talk about the immigrants and refugees who have been struggling to put food on their tables for years. Black and brown people, workers, who are being extorted back into work by predatory employers without childcare in place. We need progressive revenue now, so no sunset clause, raise the effective tax rate, bring it up to August 1st, and do not kick it to the ballot, because people needed this relief yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Emily MacArthur.
Hi, my name is Emily MacArthur. I'm a renter in District 2, and I'm calling to say to pass a strong Amazon tax today. I think this has already been a vote that's been too long delayed, and as MLK said, justice delayed is justice denied. I demand that you vote yes for $50 million, both for the Green New Deal funding and for the 1,000 homes, which are just absolutely cannot wait, urgent priorities for our community that you have voted time and time again in hollow resolutions to say that you support. Now is the time to put your money where the mouse is. We need action, not just hollow resolutions. I also want to say, shame on Mayor Durkin for her attack on our movement. This absurd letter that she issued yesterday, calling on the council to attack Councilmember Sawant, in the midst of a pandemic and a budget crisis, she wants the council to waste time reinvestigating what the independent SEC already investigated, and she wants the whole city to proclutch that someone did a graffiti in her neighborhood. She called endangerment while she doesn't take ownership for teargassing an entire city block to her residence. She hasn't explained why it was okay to mace an eight-year-old girl. Jenny's-
The next three speakers are Gabe Pelly, Jessica Skoslo, and Joe Simmons.
My name is Gabe Pelly. I'm a volunteer on the Tax Amazon Campaign and a renter in District 4. Unfortunately, my Councilmember Alex Peterson has made abundantly clear he intends to do anything in his power to undermine our movement for an Amazon tax. He's now disingenuously supporting an amendment to put the Amazon tax on the ballot. Councilmember Peterson is aware we already have the signatures to take to voters if we need- if the council fails to act. Instead, his amendment is designed to pump the brakes on our remarkable momentum and allow for a big business to spend millions on a misinformation campaign, as Amazon did last year to get him elected. Our movement will accept no more delays. The climate crisis won't wait. The affordable housing and homelessness crisis won't wait. The pandemic won't wait. Hold the vote today. Heat our movement's demands to cut the sunset clause, fund a Green New Deal, and 1,000 homes in the Central District. Thank you.
Next is Jessica Skoslo.
Hi, thank you, Councilmembers, for letting me speak. My name is Jessica Skalzo, and I am a District 3 resident, and I am calling to encourage the council to vote for the original Sawant and Morales Amazon and Big Business Tax. We don't need a sunset clause. We absolutely need Green New Deal provisions, and we need to add $50 million more to it to make sure we are prioritizing 1,000 new affordable homes in the Central District to start to tip away at the racist gentrification. I think much more will be needed, but that is a good start. And also, I have been collecting signatures on the past few weekends, and people are excited about this tax. They think it is necessary, and so I would definitely encourage you all to vote for it today without delay. Thank you for taking my message.
Hey, thank you so much. Okay, we have about 10 minutes left for public comment. I am going to ask the IT folks to give us 30 seconds on the timer, so we can try and get as many people in as possible. I've seen other councils do 30 seconds. Not ideal, but would love to hear from as many people as possible. Josh Castle, Joe Simmons, and Rosie Daniel. Josh, welcome.
Hi, my name is Josh Castle with Lehigh. We urge council to reject austerity and budget cuts with progressive taxation that can bring in 200 to 500 million, and reallocating the bloated SPD budget that takes up 25% of the city budget. We can, in fact, fully fund the things we need to bring more people inside, protect more people from COVID, and reverse the severe effects of lack of affordable housing, gentrification, and displacement. Please support the Central Area Housing Plan. Please support more tiny house villages, and please support Councilmember Herbald's amendment to add-
Thank you very much. Joe Simmons, welcome.
Hello. I'd like to thank all of the speakers so far for their good points. I am urging Seattle City Council to support the original Amazon tax, and I would like to emphasize that the crisis that Seattle, this country, and this world are experiencing cuts deeper than any one movement could possibly account for, and I would like to urge Seattle City Council to think big, under-
Thank you so much. IT, if you could give them 35 seconds to wrap up their comments, so that they can hear the chime at 30 seconds, that would be great. Rosie Daniels, followed by Hannah Swabda, and then Rachel Brooks.
Hi, my name is Rosie Daniels. I'm a D3 renter. Just real quick, this council wouldn't be considering this tax were it not for our strength as a movement, for the Amazon tax, and the fact that we're fully prepared to take it all the way to November's ballot. I fully support Councilmember Sawant's amendments, but I specifically want to hear the councilmembers who support a sunset clause explain to us, what value does that have for us, Seattle working people? When you're unable to do that, I would just remind you that we won't forget that you betrayed us, and we'll keep going. We are demanding that you vote, that you remove the insulting sunset clause, and that you vote today, because we needed an Amazon tax yesterday, and we need it 20 years from now, too. Thank you.
Hannah, welcome.
Hi, I'm calling in today to urge the council to vote today with no delay to tax big business. The City Council is only discussing this Amazon tax because of the immense pressure that working people have created, and we should see this as a victory for our movement that a progressive revenue tax is being discussed. The Democrats' Amazon tax proposal is watered down from the start, and it is wholly inadequate. We need as strong of a tax as possible to make a real ant tax. The movement is demanding $500 million a year, not $174 million. We should not have a sunset clause. We need an extra $50 million to fund Green New Deal programs, an extra $50 million to fund 1,000 affordable homes for dis-
Thank you. Amanda, oops, I'm sorry, Rachel Brooks, welcome.
Hello, my name is Rachel Brooks, President of Protec 17, which represents approximately 2,600 city of Seattle employees, as well as being a resident of District 3, and I'm speaking in favor of Jump Start Seattle. This is an important step to help Seattleites who continue to struggle due to COVID-19, and to help us on a path to an inclusive recovery, both economically and emotionally. The very slight financial impact to our largest corporations is nothing compared to the devastation our workers have faced. It is crucial that this bill be passed in this council with no delay and no sunset clause, as our communities need aid and improved services immediately and continuously.
Thank you so much for your testimony. The next three are Amanda Soral, Scott Bertrani, and Dale Bright. Welcome, Amanda.
Hi, thank you. My name is Amanda, and I'm an organizer with 350 Seattle, and I'm calling today to support this progressive taxation. Thank you for considering it. I also want to support the amendments that would make it stronger, specifically Councilmember Sawant's amendments, one of which would direct $50 million in funding toward a Green New Deal. A year ago, the entire Seattle City Council passed a resolution in support. Now you all have a chance to follow up on that promise by supporting the Green New Deal in name and in actual legislation and funds. We have an opportunity to address this head-on, which ultimately will be less expensive than waiting until it's too late.
Thank you. Scott, welcome.
I am Scott Bertini, and I'm the Policy Director for Lifelong AIDS Alliance, as one of the largest and oldest community-based medical case management, housing, and food providers under the umbrella of Chicken Soup Brigade, serving high acuity populations throughout Seattle in King County. We're here to speak up for Councilmember Mosqueta's Jump Start Seattle legislation. Members, our agency was formed by the health crises of our day. Not unlike the public health disparities and inequities, this legislation is proposing to millerate, and for those who live at the margins, in the margins, we realize how important and vital it is to underpin people's lives in permanent supportive and nurturing environments. We support-
Thank you very much. The next three people are Dale Bright, Alice Locker, and Molly Moon Nitzel.
I'm Dale Bright. I'm speaking on behalf of the 5,500 men and women of Labor's Local 242, many of whom live or work in Seattle. We encourage the city of Seattle to pass Jump Start Seattle, include the Central Area Plan and expansion of tiny house villages. In the rush to build housing, we must remember the workers. Building these publicly funded projects should be paid the area's standard wage with benefits, and these projects need to include training. We have seen success on housing projects in delivering living wages and couple of careers in the building trades. Now is not the time to compound the crisis by allowing these projects to be built without these standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Dale, Alice, welcome.
Sawant amendments. Hi, I'm Alice Lockhart, speaking with 350 Seattle. We strongly support all the Sawant amendments and strongly oppose the so-called level playing field amendments that tilt the playing field by capping taxes on big business but not on working people. And please don't wait for a ballot measure or sunset jump start. We need progressive revenue now, and we'll still need it later. Thank you.
Thank you. Molly Moon, welcome.
I live in District- Hi, my name is Molly Moon Nitzel. I live in District 3. I own Molly Moon's Homemade Ice Cream, and feel very responsible for our 90 employees and their livelihoods and health. I urge all of you to vote yes on Jump Start Seattle. I have been very thankful for all of the outreach and work that's been- that has gone into a bill that makes sense for our whole community. I want to particularly say thank you for the childcare component and the small business support.
Thank you so much, Molly. Anna Bolina, followed by Barbara Finney, and Ellen Anderson. Anna Bolina?
Good afternoon. My name is Anna Bonian. I'm with Enterprise Community Partners, here today to ask you to vote yes on the Jump Start Seattle bill, and on the amendments that strengthen clarify the intent and effectiveness of the bill. Funding for small businesses, housing, immigrant, and refugees is critical to our equitable recovery, and moreover, now more than ever, we can't afford not to invest in housing. If the past few months have shown us anything- If the past few months have shown us anything, it's that affordable housing is not only our moral and social responsibility, but a critical strategy to safeguard the health of individuals and the public and provide solutions to social inequities. With the intention, I urge the council to act today.
Thank you so much. Barbara Finney?
I live in District... My name is Barbara Finney. I live in District Five. I'm speaking for the Amazon tax, which you need to vote on today. No delays, no watering down. We need 50 million for 1,000 homes in the CD. Quality new affordable homes to allow African-American households to return to the neighborhoods. Tax Amazon.
Thank you. And Richard Vogt.
Hi, my name's Richard Vogt. I'm in District Number Four. I believe a city should take care of its weakest members. A city cannot call itself civilized when its children, disabled, sick, and elderly, are neglected. I don't believe there is any scenario in which preventable suffering is an acceptable outcome, as long as money is saved. So we need to do progressive taxation now, fully fund the Seattle Green New Deal, get used to the idea of clawing back money from wealthy to help the marginalized.
Thank you, Richard. The last four speakers are the Reverend Angela Ying, Ellen Anderson, Uma Ravana, and S. Kershela. Reverend Angela, welcome.
Yes, this is Reverend Angela Ying. I am with over 200 faith leaders, 220 actually, who have signed a letter that you passed not only tax Amazon without watering it down, but actually add an additional $50 million to fund 1,000 affordable homes in the Central District in support of our Black families to live and return to their neighborhood to reverse racist gentrification. Also, 50 million for funding the Green New Deal, including legislation for climate justice. We want no sunset clause. We want to make sure Black Lives Matter, and we ask you to vote now for the budget so that we, the People's Movement, can...
Thank you. Ellen, welcome.
Ellen, I live in District... Hi, my name is Ellen, and I live in District Two. This city council needs to pass the strongest 500 million a year with no sunset clause Amazon tax today. I can't help but wonder how much city-owned housing we would have built today if the majority of the city council hadn't repealed the movement's previous Amazon tax. Please don't make the same mistake. COVID-19 is not just a global healthcare pandemic, it's also an economic... Seattleites have already blown through their savings, and we need this housing now. This housing crisis doesn't care if there's a pandemic, do you? And if so, how will you account for that? I urge the city council to support our movement and the People's Movement.
Uma, welcome, Uma.
My name is Uma Ravana. Hello, my name is Uma Ravana, and I'm a tech entrepreneur at Seattle District Seven, and I'm not representing the board or the companies I advise. As a tech entrepreneur, I want the city council to pass Sawant Tax Amazon 500 million per year legislation with no sunset clause today, and without further ado, and without watering it down. It would tax big business beginning immediately to fund COVID relief, affordable housing, and the Green New Deal. I also want Mayor Jenny Durkan to resign. She's failed the people of Seattle with her horrific policies and violence she's unleashed over and over again. Please resign Mayor Durkan, and please pass Sawant Tax Amazon 500 million per year legislation.
And then S. Kershela. Sorry about the last name. Welcome, S.
Hi, my name is S. Charushila. I am a homeowner in District Five. I'm also an economist. The current recession is being raised as a reason to avoid passing a robust, large tax on businesses which are large. But the underlying issues the city faces are caused by structural inequality, and taxation in order to fund spending on marginal people is not a problem that worsens recessions. So we need large, progressive sources of revenue which are long-term to address structural inequality, and recessions are not a reason...
Thank you so much for all of your comments today. We really appreciate the folks who've signed in. Please do email us your additional comments, and we really appreciate folks weighing in. You can, again, testify today at 12 noon. Council colleagues, that ends our public comment for this morning. Again, we will pick that up at 2:00 PM today. You can sign up for public comment at 12 noon today, or send us your comments via email at council@seattle.gov. Let's move on to other items of business. Will the clerk please read Item One into the record?
Agenda item one. Council Bill 119810, related to taxation, imposing a payroll expense tax on persons engaging in business in Seattle, adding a new chapter 5.38 to the Seattle Mispaw Code and amending section 5.30, point 110, point 060, 5.55, point 010, point 040, point 060, point 150, point 165, point 220, point 230, and 6.208, point 020 of Seattle Mispaw Code for a briefing discussion and possible vote.
Wonderful. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council colleagues, I want to first say thank you to our central staff. We have central staff Dan Eater, Tom Mikesel, Ellie Pinucci, and Tracy Ratcliffe here with us from central staff. And the entire team at our central staff has really been working around the clock with the folks from IT and the clerk's office. So huge amount of appreciation for all of the work that they've done throughout this time of COVID to make it possible for us to continue having robust discussions as council colleagues and engage directly with the public. Especially today, as we think about going through the amendments that are in front of you today, the central staff has provided a comprehensive file for you. So if you're like me and you prefer to have items in paper, sometimes working just electronically is a little challenging. But what they've done for us is they have sent a zip drive with all of the amendments and all of the materials today. All of those materials are labeled in chronological order, and you can see how they will be presented in the order that is presented in the file. We have also the opportunity here from central staff who will be walking through a presentation of the various amendments. Don't worry, there will be plenty of time to talk about each of the amendments. We're going to discuss amendments as they are grouped in categories. You will see that in the presentation that central staff will provide as well. You have these materials electronically. If you're like me and your computer starts to overheat when the screen is being shared, just know you can go to your email and find all of the amendments and the PowerPoint presentations in the materials that they have sent you. Again, thank you for making this possible for us to have the materials clearly outlined in front of us. So council colleagues, in order for us to begin this discussion today, I'm going to move to have Item One before us, which would then allow for central staff to walk through each amendment presented on the agenda. And then we will again have conversations by grouping of amendments specific to theme. I move the committee recommends passage of Council Bill 119810. Is there a second? Second. It's been moved and seconded to recommend passage of the bill. Councilmembers, now that the bill is before us, I'm going to request that central staff walk through a number of amendments on the agenda. In addition, central staff will be grouping this discussion where there may be conflicts that exist to allow the sponsors of the amendments an opportunity to address it before voting on those amendments. So again, thank you to central staff for walking through the various amendments in front of us. We have in front of you for the first part of this meeting, the, basically, the revenue bill, Council Bill 119810. We will then talk more after this presentation about the amendments here, about the high-level category spend bill, which we discussed on Monday, and thanks to Ellie Pinucci and Tracy Ratcliffe for their amendments on that. And that is the majority of our meeting today, hoping to have a robust conversation. And as always, do ping me if you'd like to say something, but we're going to ask central staff to get through as much of their presentation, and then we will begin the discussion. Thank you, Dan. I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Musqueta. I'm Dan Eater, Deputy Director of Central Staff. Tom Mikesel and I will walk you through the presentation that I hope you can now see on your screen. Okay. As you are well aware, during the past couple of months, the committee's been considering proposals for a new payroll tax on the city's largest businesses, measured by their Seattle payroll. Last week, the committee reviewed the policy choices included in what has been dubbed the Jump Start Seattle Tax Bill. And the committee discussed the similarities and the differences to what has been described as the Tax Amazon Bill. So today, as I just mentioned, Tom Mikesel and I will walk through a number of amendments to the tax bill. There are three categories. Get two. One second, please. There are three categories of amendments. We will take each of these separately. There are technical amendments. There are tax structure and rate amendments, and then there is a catch-all category of all other amendments. I'm going to orient you to the slides generally, and then I'm going to turn it over to Tom to walk you through the technical amendments first. You're going to see a series of rows and grids. We have attempted to identify when there are amendments that are effectively in competition one with the next, which is to say that they are mutually exclusive, and if you adopt any one of them, you can't also adopt the other ones that have an X next to them. So the first, the first screen, I'm going to key it over, I'm going to key it over to Tom to talk through, doesn't have any X's, and so these are not amendments that are in competition. But the next, the next category will have some X's next to it. Unless there are any questions immediately, I'm going to turn it over to Tom.
Thank you, Dan. Good morning, members of the Select Budget Committee. I'm Tom Mikesel, with an analyst with central staff. So you're now looking at the screen that Dan referenced and how we have organized it. So the First Amendment to the Jump Start proposal is a technical amendment. It is numbered Amendment 21 for reference to the materials that were distributed for the agenda. As you'll see, there are no checks, no X's in any of the boxes along the row, so none of the other amendments we'll be talking about this morning have a conflict with this. In terms of the subject matter of this amendment, it was discovered during the process of reviewing amendments that the definition of compensation had lost some wording, and that was not intentional, not at the intent of the sponsors, and it was a purely drafting error. So Amendment 21 essentially restores the language back to the introduced bill as the sponsor intended. It essentially adds the following categories when they are earned for services rendered in business operations: net distributions that are payments to an owner, a partner, or an LLC member, stock grants, and bonuses.
So council colleagues, you have Amendment 21. I'm not sure that it works well with the toggling back and forth between PowerPoint presentations to share the screen, but it might be helpful as we do that in the future, just to have the amendments ready to go if people want to see that effect statement. Again, just reiterating what Tom has said, and Tom, I didn't cut you off, did I?
No.
Okay. Just to reiterate what Tom has said, Amendment 21 is technical in nature. Appreciate you catching this, Tom, and thank you for proactively working it here. Seeing that there's no conflicts here, council colleagues, I want to move to amend Council Bill 119810 as presented on Amendment 21. Is there a second? Second. It's been moved and seconded. Thank you so much to all of the central staff presentations for what exactly is considered in this technical amendment. Are there any additional comments or questions? Hearing none, seeing none, just double-checking. It's been moved and seconded that the council adopt Amendment 21 as presented on the agenda and described by central staff. Hearing no additional comments or questions, will the clerk please call the rule on adoption of Amendment 21?
Strauss? Councilmember Strauss? Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Herbold?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Morales?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sawant?
Aye.
Chair Musqueta?
Aye.
Eight in favor and none opposed?
Madam Clerk, could you please go back to Councilmember Sawant?
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes, aye. Thank you.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The motion carries, and the amendment is adopted. Central staff, thank you so much for that overview. Could you please continue on to the next group of amendments?
Chair Musqueta, would you, did I hear you ask if we could put the amendment itself up on the screen when we're discussing it?
I don't know if that's possible for you to do, but it might be helpful to have that effect statement ready to share with folks. I think the slide you presented is good as kind of context if there is conflict, but if it's available at the ready to share the effect statement, that may be helpful for folks following along.
It is pushing into advanced screen sharing, and I will do my best to do that on the fly. I'm not sure if I have the capacity, but I will try.
No pressure. As a reminder to all of our council colleagues, you have each of these amendments and the effect statement. If you need to crosswalk it, the amendment number is listed on the subject title in the materials that we've received from central staff. Okay. So council colleagues, we have in front of us a series of amendments that will be related to Amendments 20, 11, 15, through 17. I'm going to ask central staff to go through their grid here, and then, for the purposes of discussion, I will be asking folks to entertain a motion to consider Amendment Number 20 so we can have a robust discussion on all of the amendments, including some that may be late-breaking. Dan or Tom, was that you who wanted to lead us through this?
I apologize, Madam Chair. Thank you. So, and by way of, first, let me just orient, since this particular matrix does have some conflicts identified, this series of amendments that we are going to be discussing include amendments that change the, and/or the tax structure and the rate, the amount of the rate. So, for example, Amendment 20, which I will lead into, has conflicts with Amendment 11, 15, 16, 17, and of course, itself. So, so if Amendment 20 passes, then none of the other amendments can be reconciled against Amendment 20. So I'll launch now into the description of Amendment 20. What Amendment 20 does is, in reference to the introduced Jump Start bill, it adds a middle-rate tier of total business payroll expense that includes total business payrolls of $100 million to $200 million. So just to give a point of reference, the bill as introduced had a tier of $7 million up to $1 billion, and $1 billion and above. So one functional change is that there is now, with Amendment 20, an additional middle-tier of business size. An additional change in terms of structure is...
May I interrupt you for just a second? Dan, if it's possible, to show the effect statement and/or page two of that amendment, that would be helpful.
I am going to try to do that. I think what I need to do is stop sharing the PowerPoint and then try and switch to share the Word document.
You got it. That's right. And Tom, your audio sounds better today. It sounds a little glitchy when you talk fast. Just wanted to flag that for you. Looks good, Dan. Thank you very much.
Great.
So I covered the first bullet point with regards to the new total business payroll addition in terms of the tax structure. The next key point is the prior, the introduced Jump Start plan had a levels of compensation such that the payroll expense would have different rates applied for 150,000 to 500,000 and 500,000 and above. What Amendment 20 does with reference to the introduced bill is it revises the cutoff point from $500,000 to $100,000. So next, in line with regards to the effect, at those new payroll-sized tier and compensation amount tiers, the new rates are, as shown in the effect statement. I don't know if it would be helpful in the interest of time for me to read through those or not. those or, or not. Each, each, each rate is new, is new, and each, and there's an additional compensation tier. So I will defer to the chair whether or not I should describe those further beyond what's stated on the screen.
I'm, I'm happy to describe these. I will note that this is a cosponsored bill from Councilmember Morales and myself. Tom, as we maybe talk about the tiers very briefly, just for technical purposes, again, colleagues, this is not intended to be a debate on this amendment, just as for technical purposes. Tom, I may ask you to call in just because it is starting to glitch a little bit. So IT can look for Tom to call in. And regarding the structure and the, the backbone of what the table looks like, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Morales, who had initially considered and briefly discussed last week this middle category. Councilmember Morales, from a technical perspective, would you like to add anything to Council Central Staff's presentation?
Well, only that we, I, I do want to thank Central Staff, my, Tom in particular, for working with me to find this middle territory. And as he was saying, what we are trying to do here is amend by inserting a third tier into the tax rate. And this additional tier does allow us to raise an additional $35 million for the community. So I do want to thank Councilmember Mosqueta for our conversation and your willingness to have this conversation so that we can, we can move from the 175 to this 215 that we have in the, in the amendment.
Wonderful. I'll add to that, Tom, just a reminder as you dial and make sure to mute your computer as well. I will add to that, that what you see in this amendment is the initial rates being kept stagnant for the incomes that are between 150 and 400,000. So we have kept the same rate that most of the companies, these large companies would pay for those salaries over 150. And as Tom mentioned, the upper tier salary, so folks who were previously making 500,000 and more, has been moved to $400,000. And in this effort, as you can see, when we toggle up by 0.3% the higher income category, and then again, another 2.2% in the middle income, or in the very large category, you got large, very large, and mega-large. In the very large category, that allows for the known total to be computed to $214.3 million. So that brings up the total proposal by about $40 million while keeping that first tier stagnant for what large companies can assume to be assessed in the category between 150 and 400. That's just for additional technical feedback. Councilmember Morales, anything else? We have a question from Councilmember Lewis. Okay. Councilmember Lewis, you had a question for Tom?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Two quick questions for Tom as relates to, to this particular box here on the PowerPoint. So the first one, the, the total $214 million tag based on the amendment and the addition of the middle tier, does, is that 214 million number still not inclusive of an estimate from the 1 billion payroll tier? Is that still something where we're not, we're not completely clear on how much additional revenue that tier would bring in? You're on mute there, Tom.
Sorry, Tom, you're on mute on your computer. I'm not on your computer, on your phone.
On both, it looks like.
Right. Try to unmute your phone if possible. And just checking with IT that we have allowed Tom into the presentation. If not, Tom, please go ahead with the computer.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, you can.
Outstanding. Okay. Apologize for that. So Councilmember Lewis, with regards to your question, the, I guess there's, there's two pieces. One is that the, the calculation of the 214 million is the same, the same base data as used for the original 173 and a half. With regards to the billion-plus payroll tier, the, the data that we have does include the billion plus. It just doesn't provide the assist, the additional detail to figure out an incremental portion of, of the higher rate that is applied to those larger businesses if, if they exist in the data. So, so that's just a detailed way of saying that there is a, a portion of the, of the payroll and then the tax liability captured for those billion-plus corporations, though we don't have sufficient data to figure out the incremental piece over and above. For, for example, the difference between 1.7% or 0.7% at the 150,000 to 399,000 level and 1.4%. So it's essentially a 0.7% increment that is unknown for, for payroll expense or 150,000 to 399,000, and a half a percent for compensation of 400,000 and above. That piece is the piece that we cannot precisely estimate because data is not available.
Okay. Thank you for, for clarifying that that was still the case. That was my understanding, but I just wanted to make sure that that was still the case with this amendment. You know, other question, just for, for the sake of, of the audience and all of us here on the council as well, just wanted to ask, since we're at the beginning of the rates conversation and, and that estimate, you know, I've heard some concern from folks in the business community that we are perhaps, with the base data that we have, underestimating the total revenue. And I just wanted to give you the opportunity to publicly address the underlying methodology and, and the base data sets used to create the estimates, just so we can, for the people that are, you know, that are watching and for us as council members, again, reiterate the, because I, I think you mentioned it when we had a meeting three weeks ago, but just to, to remind everybody again, the base data and the methodology used to develop the estimate.
Absolutely. The base data came from a, a detailed request to the, the State Employment Security Department for essentially requesting detail arranged in a way that supported the, the compensation tiers as described. So the 150,000 to, to, well, originally 500,000 and then 500,000 and above. And then also, we asked for, for the payroll, the total payroll data of $7 million to $1 billion and $1 billion and above. The Employment Security Department is limited through confidentiality to disclose information that would otherwise describe either, either in a case where a business category in their data is descriptive of three or fewer employers, or, or a case where one employer is such that they represent 80% or more of the total in the category. So it, due to that restriction, the Employment Security Department was not able to disclose an, an additional cutoff identifying businesses as $1 billion and above in that 2019 data. So that gave us a significant amount of data to provide that base estimates that we've, that we've described during the course of these meetings in, in terms of the, the large portion of the, the tiers and the payroll cutoff amounts. But it doesn't allow us to, to determine the additional incremental piece for any businesses that are $1 billion and above. One additional point that I'll just add, just by way of the, how the estimate was derived, we used the 2019 data and then we inflated that to a 2021 value using the CBO's regional forecast for the Puget Sound region for wage and salary dispersment growth. So I mean, that was the, the, the essence of how the forecast, of how the estimate was derived and, and the limitations of the data with regard to that billion-plus payroll tier.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis, for asking that. I think that that is very important. Tom, Dan, thank you for the numbers that you've crunched, and I want to just take a quick second to thank the folks at ESD as well, the folks that have been working with our team to provide that data have been very, very gracious to share their time and to provide that information. So I just want to publicly thank them at Employment Security Department for all that they're doing in the midst of the big crunch on, on the need to get checks out for unemployment insurance and for family, family medical leave. Thank you for that technical question. Before we move on, any additional technical questions? Remember, we will have time to discuss each of the amendments here, but I want to have folks have a chance to hear any questions. Okay. Council President Gonzalez and then Councilmember Herbold.
Thank you. I just wanted to, there's amendments related to some exemptions to the, the base bill that we'll be considering later on. So I just want to make sure that I understand that this particular amendment does not include any categorical exemptions beyond those that are, that were either included or included in the, in the base bill.
That is, Council President Gonzalez, that is correct. This is merely a structural change to the, the payroll tiers and the compensation tiers. Doesn't, doesn't touch any of the exemptions or sunsets or start dates, which will, which Dan will cover in the second, of the second half of the presentation.
Thank you, Tom, for that clarification, and thank you, Chair Mosqueta, for allowing me an opportunity to get that clarification.
Absolutely. Thank you, Council President. Councilmember Herbold, question from you.
Thank you. I believe the base legislation estimated 2021 revenue to be $200 million in, I'm sorry, the, the base legislation estimated 2022 revenue to be $200 million. What, what are we, if, if, if this amendment passes, what are we assuming would be raised in 2022? If we have that information?
Councilmember Herbold, the estimate that staff has provided is 170, I believe, 173 and a half million dollars for 2021 in the base legislation, which dovetails with the Council Bill 119811, I believe, or 812, the amount actual spent. We have not provided a 22, 2022 estimate other than what's, what would be assumed in, in terms of inflation, so the 173 and a half million dollar amount.
I think Councilmember Herbold is referring to the inflation assumption that gets us to 203 million. I saw Ally come off a video, just wanted to see, as it relates to the spend plan, since you were using some of those numbers. Ally, could you comment on Councilmember Herbold's question?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. Councilmember Herbold, so the, the, as Tom indicated, the estimate for 2021 was about 173.5, which is what the spending plan assumed for 2021 spending. The 200 million about assumed in 2020 was the revenue goal. It is not based on an estimate. But at the request of the sponsor, we use the goal, assuming that there is some difference between the estimate and the data that's not available to provide it. So the spending plan was using the, the revenue goal rather than an estimate for 2022 and beyond.
And just for technical clarification as well, the, I think, importance of this Morales-Mosqueta amendment here is that if, as Tom was saying, the known amount was previously 173, the now known amount is 214.3. And that gets to Councilmember Lewis's question as well about the potential unknown calculation that would be the multiplier effect of having that third category for the mega-companies that, that is not factored into 214. If I, as an individual, were to be making assumptions about how that would potentially be added, you could assume that that would potentially bring us up to more of the, the $240 million threshold, but we will, that is part of the assumptions. I think the, the benefit of having these numbers in front of you is that these are the known dollars. So you could compare 214.3 compared to 173.5. Thank you, Councilmember Herbold. Please continue.
Thank you. So let me try asking the question a little differently. So that if, under the base legislation, the spend goal for 2022 was $200 million, if this amendment passes, what would be the 2022 spend goal?
Councilmember Herbold, you've sort of landed on the, the challenge here of trying to sort out the very detailed spending plan while the conversations about how, what the rate is and how much revenue is estimated to come in, sort of, is a, is a little bit of a pickle. So essentially, the, the spend plan is, that's why we don't have those details about, developed yet. What I have assumed, if I reran the housing model, for example, using the new estimates with this adjusted rate, I just assumed that a small inflationary adjustment to the $214 million would be applied. So for example, one way to think about this is if we assume the spending plan stays the same as the bill as introduced, that 65% of the money would go to housing in 2022. I'm starting with housing investments in 2022, I would assume that about 3,400 units would be developed over the, the 10 years, whereas the bill as introduced had an estimate of about 3,200 units. And so I didn't, I didn't reapply a goal versus an estimate. I just used the 2021 estimate and then adjusted it slightly for inflation.
I see Councilmember Herbold, sorry, Councilmember Peterson has his hand up. Councilmember Herbold, I think the, the way, the simple math that I have been using is to basically add about 30 to 35 million as an assumed amount to the total that you see that is known. That helps. Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta, and thanks to Central Staff for putting all this together for us. We know there have been a lot, lots of amendments, so thank you for organizing them for everybody here today. And my question is, getting back to Councilmember Lewis's question, I just wanted to make sure I understood the response on the 1 billion and more payroll tier. So that 214.3 million, that is, all those dollar amounts for the 1 billion payroll tier and above, all those are known? Or are they not known because Employment Security Department was not able to disclose that? I was just a little bit unclear on that.
Yes, Councilmember Peterson, that's a good question. It is deep into the description of how the rate model works. So we do have da, we have data for the entire payroll amounts that are collected by the Employment Security Department for, for all sizes of businesses above $7 million. And so when, when running the, the model to, to determine amounts of estimatable revenue, we can apply the, the, so for the example of this particular amendment, the 0.7% rate to, to all businesses that are $100 million and above, which will include businesses of $1 billion and above, just by virtue of, of, of the assumption that, that anything over $100 million includes $1 million and above. And, and also similarly, we can assume that since the data includes all business data, that the, the rate tier of 1.9%, which is applied to compensation of 400,000 and above for the 100 million to 1999 category can also be applied to the businesses that are $1 billion and above. So that's a really detailed way of saying that for businesses of $1 billion and above, we have the data to calculate the 0.7% for the, the payroll expense for 150,000 to 399. And we have the data to calculate the payroll expense for compensation of 400 and above at 1.9%. What we can't do is figure out the incremental portion, so the difference between 1.4% and 0.7% for 150,000 to 400,000, and the difference between 2.4% and 1.9% for compensation of 400,000 and above. That's the piece that, that the estimate do not include.
And that's okay. I, I don't need that dollar amount broken down. I guess what I need is to know whether the 214 million is, is underestimating what- what we might be able to obtain.
The, uh, Councilmember Peterson, that, um, uh, when, in discussions with the Employment Security Department, we did attempt to, to determine whether or not there is any payroll expense at the a bu- a billion dollars and above. And they were unable through confidentiality to disclose whether there is or is not data in that category. So it would be an assumption that one could make that there is additional revenue that is not being described by the estimates that we are giving, though we don't have the data to confirm that, to confirm that as, uh, that assumption.
And, and the reason I ask this question is, um, Council President Gonzalez had a really good question about, you know, does this include any exemptions? The two hundred and fourteen million, the answer is no. And I guess I'm trying to get at, um, maybe this is underestimating, the two hundred and fourteen million is maybe underestimating what the potential revenue is, which would then make room potentially for exemptions that we're about to debate later. Um, and I just wanted to understand better what was known and unknown with the dollar amount.
If, if you don't mind me jumping in, um, I, I, uh, I think it's important to, uh, put on the other side of the ledger some of the uncertainties that may make our revenue estimate too high. So you, you have been discussing the, uh, the differential for, um, the businesses that are above a billion dollars. That, that, if there are businesses that have more than a billion dollars of, of payroll, and I think it's, my assumption is that they are, but I, I don't have data to demonstrate that. And that would add to the revenue estimate as you have described. The revenue estimate has some significant uncertainties to it. We're using twenty nineteen data from before when, uh, the COVID emergencies started and we've made some assumptions to dampen, um, the expected twenty twenty-one revenue. But those are, those are assumptions that we, we can't, we can't know if they're right or not. So it is possible that our base estimate is too low because we're not capturing the incremental, uh, tax revenue from the higher rates for the billion dollars and above. It's also possible that our estimate is too high because we have too rosy a picture of what's going to happen in twenty twenty-one and beyond, uh, with it, with the, um, the COVID emergency affecting, um, payroll effectively. And so how those two, uh, balance each other out is un- unknow- unknowable at this point.
Big questions. Points well taken. Councilmember Peterson, any follow-up?
No, no, thank you. I, it, it may just point to when, when we do the spending plan, providing some flexibility. So if this tax is adopted, that there's flexibility, if the revenue amounts come in higher or lower than expected, then there's some sort of automatic way that adjustments are made. You know, doing things based on a percentage basis rather than, uh, for the different spending buckets, doing it based on percentages rather than based on dollar amounts or something to provide flexibility.
Great point. I saw Council, I'm, I'm sorry, I saw Council Central Staff. Ally, could you take yourself off mute? And then we have Councilmember Lewis for another question. Um, just on that, uh, I assume, uh, just want to remind folks, that's a great, um, reminder for us as well that this is part of the reason that we are interested in having a week break next week so that we can continue to get, um, feedback on the amount that is raised from this potential tax and then plug that into the spend plan throughout next week so that you will then have that text in front of you for consideration on the fifteenth. Uh, Ally, would you like to add anything to that?
Thank you, Chair Moskata. I think, um, I wouldn't add much. You essentially said what I was going to say. The only thing I would add is just to note that ultimately, when the council adopts a spending plan, typically it would be percentage-based. And then that gets formalized through the annual adoption, uh, annual budget adoption process through specific appropriations where you're actually allocating, um, authorizing spending of, of dollars. And so there's a, um, it gets sort of refined through the annual budget adoption process.
Thank you for that reminder. Uh, Councilmember Lewis.
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam Chair, and it, I don't know if this is a question for Mike, uh, I mean for, um, I'm sorry, for, for Dan, or if it's a question for Tom Mikesol, but I, uh, wanted to just throw out there to Central Staff. Um, I know that, um, we're unclear exactly how many taxpayers are in the one billion payroll tier. Though it probably not a whole bunch of companies, probably just one or two. I, I wonder if we have estimates, um, of what the, the base is for the hundred million to nine hundred ninety-nine point nine million, um, tier? And if we have a good idea of, um, you know, the universe of, um, companies that that would impact? And, and if, how confident we are of the estimates too within the middle tier?
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Lewis. I can take that question. We did, um, in, in the original data exploration with E S D, trying to identify at what, at what point, um, they could disclose data, that, that point was indeed, um, a hundred million dollars. And so they did provide the, the detail. I believe there were approximately thirty-two companies that were in the hundred, that a hundred million and above. Uh, similarly, um, for, um, both the, um, well, for the, the amendment, um, that, that we're discussing right now, the, we made an additional request of E S D to define the, uh, four hundred thousand and above, um, company, uh, employee expense, uh, payroll expense tier. And so we have that data as well. I don't, off the top of my head, know how many employees that covers, but we do, you know, the, there was data to enable us to, to set the rates, at these tiers as described.
Tom, excuse me for-
Oh, sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead, Dan.
Well, I was just gonna ask clarification on your behalf. Maybe you were gonna ask it. Uh, I, I, Tom, I, I think Councilmember Lewis was asking about the, specifically about the tier between one hundred million and one billion. And I think you were answering above one hundred million inclusive of one billion. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, and, and actually, uh, Dan, you did, um, sort of preempt my follow-up, um, because that was how I took, uh, Tom's response as well. Um, and so just to clarify then, like, we have a pretty good data picture for the number of companies that are above a hundred million. But above that, we don't really have a great idea of like, how many of those are above like a quarter billion, half billion, one billion. We just know that there's thirty-two companies above a hundred million. Is that a good read of that?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. And, um, I would encourage Central Staff to continue with your presentation. Again, just for the process that we're engaged in here, we're hearing all of the amendments in, um, this first category that, uh, Central Staff provided on the slide that we were looking at. So we are gonna, uh, hear about, uh, right now, Amendment Number Twenty, then eleven, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. Um, and then we will get into the discussion and possible actions. So just reminding folks, we're still in the overview section here. Tom and Dan, please continue. There's no additional questions on that. Seeing none. Please continue.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Chair Moskata. Uh, so I will, um, now talk about Amendment Eleven. Um, so Amendment Eleven, uh, essentially, so this gets into, um, referring back to the matrix, uh, the instance where it says, uh, tax structure change, um, so that it conflicts with other, um, subsequent amendments. Uh, what this does is, um, in order to gen- generate a total of a five hundred million dollars of annual estimated revenue, it essentially implements, um, the tax Amazon, uh, tax approach. So it removes the sunset provision, removes the, um, the level playing field provision, which is the, the instance where council will assess, um, overlapping jurisdictions, progressive tax, um, options and, and repeal the tax, um, or, or the visit amendments if necessary. If there is a, a, um, an overlapping jurisdiction that passes such a tax, it removes the, um, the payroll expense, uh, comp- the compensation tiers. It removes the, um, the different gradations of total size of business payroll and replaces it with a single cutoff of seven hundred, or seven, I apologize, seven million dollars and above in total expense. It adds a single tax rate of one point six three percent, applied to all non-exempt payroll expense. It adds an exemption for nonprofit business and home care agencies. Um, it, it adds a definition of an integrated business enterprise as a single business, for the purpose of calculating the, uh, the total payroll expense against the seven million dollar threshold. It, um, precludes downward adjustments in the C P I, uh, and then it changes the start date of the tax to August first, twenty twenty.
Okay, colleagues, again, not for debate, um, but just for technical, uh, questions. Councilmember Sawat.
Thank you. Just, uh, not a question, but just to, uh, reiterate something that Tom already mentioned, just to clarify. Amendment Eleven is not in conflict with Amendment Twenty as, as Tom, uh, just asserted. Just, that's because it's, it would, if this would pass, it would simply replace the Amendment Twenty structure. So those two things are not in conflict.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawat. Okay, seeing no additional questions, uh, let's go on to Amendment Fifteen for an overview.
Uh, thank you, Chair Moskata. So Amendment Fifteen, um, does a few structural changes and, and then also changes the, um, the rates in the introduced legislation. It removes the sunset provision, removes the level playing field, uh, increases the total rates across all payroll expense and compensation tiers, precludes a, a downward inflationary, inflationary adjustment into thresholds and exemption amounts. And then it, uh, it, it changes the tax start date to August first from, um, January first of twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one. Uh, so, um, the estimated, uh, portion of these changes results in a revised revenue estimate of four hundred sixty-six point six million dollars, um, in twenty twenty-one and a hundred ninety-four point five in twenty twenty. This is, brings, uh, in essence, brings in an additional of two hundred and ninety-three million dollars in estimatable revenues, uh, in twenty twenty-one. Um, and the, uh, and then intent, again, this, the, the tax bill does not, um, do this, but the, uh, as described by the sponsor of the amendment, the intent is, um, for general fund, um, general fund, uh, revenue replacement in twenty twenty-one.
Again, not for debate, but any questions? Technical questions? Uh, Councilmember Sawat? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Uh, if you can.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Uh, just in relation to the Amendment Number Twenty that we discussed, the technical aspects of, uh, this, uh, were, if, if, uh, when, when we go back to considering, uh, Amendment Number Twenty for a vote, then the Number Fifteen will come as an Amendment Twenty A, which is, which would be an Amendment to Amendment, uh, Twenty, because it would be under that tax structure that is being discussed under Twenty. So, um, so just to explain that if it would be discussed as Amendment A and then Number Sixteen that Tom will go to will be discussed in Amendment Twenty B, and then Seventeen would be discussed as, uh, Amendment Number Twenty C. Uh, and we, and, but they also appear as Fifteen, Sixteen, Seventeen because we, we had prepared them originally as standalone amendments. But then when Amendment Twenty came, which sort of amends the tax structure itself, then we had to bring these amendments in the context of that. So it depends on which one, whi- which way it's going to get considered.
Appreciate that. And just to reiterate, um, uh, A, B, and C, as sent by your staff, equal Fifteen, Sixteen, and Seventeen, um, just for people following along. Okay, hearing no additional questions, uh, please continue.
Thank you, Chair Moskata. Amendment Sixteen, um, uh, it merely makes, um, it makes a, uh, changes to the tax rates in the introduced legislation, um, to generate an additional fifty-two million dollars in estimatable revenue, um, in twenty twenty-one. Uh, and, and again, similarly, not included in the bill, um, uh, in the amendment specifically, though the intent, um, of the, of the sponsor is that the gen- newly generated revenues, um, would be co- associated with an amendment to Council Bill one one nine nine eleven, or eight one one, um, to build a thousand plus homes in the central district for people zero to eighty percent A and I, or area median income.
Thank you. Tom, technical questions? Hearing none. Please continue.
Um, uh, similarly, Amendment Seventeen, um, changes, uh, revises the rates in the, in the introduced bill, um, to generate fifty-two million doll- fifty-two million dollars in estimatable revenue. These revenues would be associated with, uh, a, a spending plan amendment, um, with, for Green New Deal investments.
Technical questions? Okay, hearing none. Does that conclude the summary of the tax structure and rate amendments?
Uh, Madam Chair, yes, it does.
Okay, so I want to thank you guys for all of the work that you have done and the entire Central Staff team, um, for working around the clock and for making, um, the review of this, um, uh, very easy to follow. Tom, uh, Tom, thank you for the walkthrough. Dan, thank you for, uh, being flexible with the screen that you were sharing because I think that that helped. It may help as we continue to have discussions to have those effect statements listed as well. For the purposes of discussions, uh, Council colleagues, I move to amend Council Bill one one nine eight one zero as presented on Amendment Twenty. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Amendment Twenty as presented on the agenda and described by Central Staff. First, I want to turn to Councilmember Morales as co-sponsor of this legislation, uh, to tee up the discussion on the amendment in front of us.
Yes, I am. Thank you. Um, thanks, everyone. I do want to, as we, as we begin this conversation, I do want to thank, uh, Councilmember Sawat for introducing the Progressive Revenue Bill this year. I think it's important to acknowledge that, um, without her urging this body to consider the idea, uh, over and over again, it is likely that we may not have come up, uh, it may not have come up. The majority of this council was here in twenty eighteen when the employee hours tax was repealed. And I know there was real trepidation about revisiting the topic, uh, understandably so. So I do want to thank Councilmember Sawat. Today, we are voting on a major structural change in how we finance public services. And throughout this renewed budget discussion, um, I've been voicing my strong desire to see a sizable, uh, progressive revenue package that really begins to address the enormity of the issues that we face. And I didn't realize when I co-sponsored the original bill that we would be staring down a three hundred million dollar budget shortfall or that we'd be faced with a public health and a financial crisis, both of which have really laid bare the devastating impact of the layers of inequity in our society. This amendment, um, as we've been saying, uh, inserts a third tier into the tax rates. So I want to thank Tom again for working with me to determine, um, where that third rate should go, where that third tier should go, and, uh, for helping us get to an additional thirty-five million dollars for the community. And as I said, I want to thank Councilmember Moskata for our conversations around, um, uh, how we get here, so that we can, we can get additional revenue for our community. I do think it's a, it's a testament to the power of collaborative governance that we produce good outcomes for our community, especially now when there are so many, um, so many challenges that our cities facing. Um, and I'm proud to be co-sponsoring this with her.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Morales, I appreciate your comments and all of your work as well. I'll just make a few comments as well and then turn it over for, um, folks to discuss. Uh, first, I also want to echo appreciation for the ongoing push to have progressive revenue pass. Councilmembers Morales and Sawat, uh, really, I think your, um, introduction of your first bill in January got the ball rolling in terms of renewing our discussion around what it means to truly invest in affordable housing. And I think that that also initiated some incredibly, um, productive conversations at the state level to keep the pressure on. Want to thank the work that you did to introduce your first bills, which I think prompted, um, folks to advocate in Olympia. Thank Council, um, Council, I'm sorry, to thank Council, geez, I keep saying Council, um, Representative Macri, uh, for the bill that she introduced as well, even though that bill didn't move forward. I think it continued to show that the people and community are calling for us to right-size up this upside-down taxism. Um, and we know that this bill alone will not close the gap that we need and that we also need to continue to couple city resources with regional, state, and federal dollars to respond to the COVID crisis. But in working with all of you and, uh, following the lead of the model that Councilmember Morales discussed last week, I think that this proposal in front of us brings up the known dollar amount by forty million dollars. And I want to thank Councilmember Morales for the creative solutions to help move the dial to continue to explore ways to, for us to push and do better by communities who don't typically have a seat at the table. This amendment does just that. By adding approximately forty million in revenue collected, known revenue collected, we can both invest this year in immediate COVID needs and in the out-years in additional affordable housing and homelessness crisis. Uh, colleagues, again, as a reminder, we will continue to have conversations about how to move those dials and percentages in the spend plan, um, as we reconvene again on the fifteenth. But the proposal in front of us would reflect that many in the community, including labor and business- and business and advocates, small businesses and community advocates who've been engaged in the conversation, also would like us to dial up the dollar amount to the degree possible. This allows us, I believe, to keep the initial percentage point constant as we introduced it, but also recognize that the higher salaries could absorb potentially more of an assessment, and we can bring that assessment up and really make some incredible progress this year. So again, thanks to everybody who provided feedback on this, and to Councilmember Morales for your co-sponsorship and your leadership on this structure that's in front of us. Other comments on Amendment 20? Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you. I'll, I will be supporting this amendment. I just want to signal that, just trying to work through these amendments with everybody else, so that we're, we're sort of narrowing, narrowing down as a group what, what the ultimate bill will be. It doesn't necessarily signal my support one way or the other for the final package, since we don't know what the final package is yet, but I will be supporting this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson, and I believe I saw another hand? Was that Councilmember Strauss? Okay, okay. Councilmember Sawat.
Thank you. I will, of course, and this should come as no surprise to anybody, but I'm absolutely for any and all measures that will raise more progressive revenues, and specifically by taxing the wealthiest corporations and the wealthiest people in our society to fund working people's needs. So this measure that would bring an estimated $40 million per year or more is something that I will support, although I will say that this is still not enough in terms of the, making the, the whole package of the Amazon tax commensurate with the scale of the crisis, and that's why I have the other amendment to take the whole amount that is raised per year up to $500 million. And then also, I would like to know when I can move my amendments to this amendment. I'm not clear with which point you would like me to come in, but just wanted to flag that.
Okay, thank you, Councilmembers Sawat, for your comments. Did I see another hand? Okay, before we consider, it's been moved and seconded for this amendment, Amendment Number 20, so before we consider voting on Amendment 20, Councilmember Sawat, I'll come back to you if there's not additional comments on Amendment 20. Let's call these any comments on Amendment 20. Okay, Councilmember Sawat, I'm not seeing additional comments. If you would like to just move any of your amendments, either A, B, or C, I believe now is the time to consider that.
Thank you. First, I move to amend Amendment 20 as presented on Amendment 20A. Sorry, that's a sentence with lots of amendments, but I move to amend, amended, I move to amend Amendment 20 as presented on Amendment 20A. My office circulated a copy of this earlier this morning. As I said before, this amendment simply takes the place of Amendment 15, which was presented by my office as a standalone amendment before Amendment 20 came into existence, and this amendment would raise an additional $293 million per year to the progressive revenues by raising the tax rate. And the reason is that the mayor has just announced an austerity budget. She has announced that there would be at least $293 million of cuts, and I believe that that is only the first round of cuts. There will be more budget cuts coming, and budget cuts means all the burden is placed on social programs that the most marginalized in our communities of color rely on, and also it means mandatory furloughs and loss of jobs entirely for our City of Seattle employees, and I don't mean the police. So this would make it, make it possible for the council to adopt a budget in the coming weeks that is a zero-cuts budget. And just lastly, I'll say that the mayor has said that the budget cuts are unavoidable. That's absolutely dishonest and unconscionable in a city as wealthy as Seattle. There's no excuse for the cost of the recession to be forced on working people and those who are in most need of public services. I will urge, urge the council to support this amendment. And it would, it would raise by $293 million.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawat. It's been moved. Is there a second? Hearing no second. The motion fails. Councilmember Sawat, do you want to move to your next amendment?
Yes, thank you. I move to amend Amendment 20 as presented on Amendment 20B. Again, this is the replica of Amendment 16, which we have adopted to fit into the structure of Amendment 20. And this amendment would put an additional $50 million, which is, you know, $50-odd million, Tom had the exact figure, $50 million to the revenues by raising the tax rate, and put those funds into building 1,000 homes in the Central District to reverse, begin to reverse racist gentrification. As Reverend Carrie Anderson, pastor of Seattle's first African Methodist Episcopal Church, said earlier this month at the press conference that we had unveiling this call for 1,000 new affordable homes in the Central District for the Black community, to quote him, he said, "Simply put, if Black lives matter, then affordable housing for Black families in the central area should matter." The Central District used to be greater than 70% African-American some decades ago, and now it is less than 18% African-American, because first there was racist gentrification, and now there's economic gentrification, and of course, that hits communities of color, and particularly the Black community and the Native community, the hardest with private developers gentrifying with active support from the political establishment, blocking rent control, underfunding affordable housing, and taking land from churches. I would underscore that this amendment has powerful support through the, the letters signed by 220 faith leaders and activists that all council members have received. And I want to make it clear that these, that we are talking about additional dollars, because we don't want communities of color and the marginalized to be pitted against each other in a robbing Peter to pay Paul kind of scenario, where there's very limited funds from progressive revenues, and then we have to struggle to prioritize all the needs. What we're talking about is prioritizing 1,000 homes for Black families in the Central District, in addition to building affordable housing throughout the city for all our needy communities. And so I just want to clarify that these homes are not already included in the Democrats' Amazon tax legislation. According to central staff, the Democrat legislation would build about 2,300 permanent supportive housing units and 900 units of 30 to 50 area median income over the next 10 years. Even with the slight increase in revenue under Amendment 20, there is no way the Democrat legislation will fund 1,000 homes in the Central District. The math unfortunately is unforgiving, so I would urge a second to this amendment and also a vote for passage of this amendment.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawat. It's been moved. Is there a second? Hearing none, the motion fails. Councilmember Sawat, please go ahead with your next amendment, and we can come back to some of these items as we do additional debate, but I want to make sure you get to that item C.
I move to amend Amendment 20 as presented on Amendment 20C. Again, this is the same as Amendment 17, restructured for fitting into Amendment 20, and it would add $50 million to the revenues by raising the tax rate to fund the Green New Deal projects and job creation. I would start by making the same argument that I made earlier, that we're not talking about restructuring and in a limited pie, but actually increasing the amounts of revenue so that we can build affordable housing for Black families in the Central District, affordable housing throughout the city, and expand Green New Deal programs. Last year, the City Council voted for Green New Deal, the Green New Deal resolution, and declared a commitment, quote, "to fund and establish dedicated progressive revenue sources for its Green New Deal," unquote. This amendment would do just that, and I wanted to paraphrase Amanda Sorel, who spoke on behalf of 350 Seattle, which is a partner organization in the Tax Amazon Coordinating Committee, who said that we want actual, we want action to represent the real commitment to the Green New Deal. This would invest in the Green New Deal, energy efficiency upgrades to homes, investment in renewables, and predominantly, that's most important, because it's also a climate justice question. It will create or support over 20,000 jobs, which would greatly benefit marginalized communities. I really thank 350 Seattle, Mazaska Talks, which is an indigenous activist organization, and the Sierra Club for their powerful press release this morning supporting this amendment. And I will say that this is a very small amount of money for big business, just $50 million additionally per year. I really urge the council to support this, and I really don't accept any upcoming comments that are, that might come from council members, that all of this is already included. There is no dedicated to funding for the Green New Deal, and even if there may be some funds here or there, it's not enough money overall. Ultimately, as I said, the mathematics is, mathematics of dollars that are available to ordinary people, poor people, for the fight for climate justice, those dollars have an unforgiving mathematics, and if we don't put dollars on the table for act, that are commensurate with the crisis, then that would come, you know, one thing would come at the expense of something else. So if you, if you're going to fund Green New Deal with limited funds, that would come at the expense of COVID relief, homes and services. If you fund homes, it would come at the expense of Green New Deal services and COVID relief. So it's just moving the pieces around. I don't agree with that. I think that would be wrong on our part, and that's why we need to raise the tax so that there's sufficient funds, and these are bare minimum sufficient funds. I wouldn't say that they're sufficient even with this amendment.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Sawat, for the overview. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. Councilmembers, we have in front of us Amendment Number 17, is that correct, which is now C?
Yes.
Okay, great. Councilmembers, we have Amendment 17, which is in front of us, which is relabeled Amendment 20C.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could, it's actually technically Amendment, Amendment 20C, so it's Amendment C to Amendment 20. Amendment 17 is actually a standalone amendment.
Okay.
Just on a technical basis.
Yeah, I think that's what she meant, sorry.
Sorry for that.
That's what you meant, that's why I said yes.
That's okay. So yeah, the content of original Amendment 17 is now in front of us, retitled Amendment C to Amendment 20, just for the purposes of clarification. So colleagues, if you would like to look at the effect statement, Tom, I'm sorry, Dan, if you don't mind, since the effect statement, if I'm correct, is the same in Amendment C, could you please pull up the effect statement for us so that we can look at that? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We will entertain comments and questions on this item. I am not seeing any hands. Councilmember Juarez, did you have something you'd like to say outside your box like that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to follow up with and ask Councilmembers Sawat a question, because you did allude to it, Councilmembers Sawat, and I know we've had discussions. I want to thank you for your advocacy on the climate change issue, that you believe that the base legislation and some of the amendments don't adequately address the legislation that we pass in support of climate change and the money that we have dedicated to this effort. So I would, I gave you the second, because I wanted to hear more why you felt that that was, that we were, or it was deficient in addressing the climate change issue and the needed funds to, to promote that purpose. Thank you.
Councilmember Sawat. Sorry, you may be frozen or on mute. Did you want to respond to Councilmember Juarez's question?
Sorry, yes, I was struggling to find the mute button. I can accept that there is nothing new that I can add beyond what I've already said. So basically, I would be reiterating what I've said. I appreciate your question, Councilmember Juarez. The one, one problem is that in the base legislation, that's under consideration from the, from the Democrats on the City Council, there is actually no dedicated money for the kind of projects we are talking about, which is Green New Deal retrofitting of massive numbers of homes, and these, these would be, you know, residential places for working class and middle class and poor people, and this would actually, you know, directly address the question of climate justice and also the question of carbon emissions, because building emissions are one of the biggest sources of emissions of, of harm that we see in, in terms of, you know, if you want to actually reach the zero-carbon goal that Seattle has. So in that sense, it's an unfunded mandate in the existing legislation, but I think fundamentally, what needs to be taken into account is the other point I made, which is that most of the things that are under consideration in the base legislation, in the Democrats' Amazon tax, I strongly support, as I've, you know, I've made it very abundantly clear that I support any dollar that we can win through progressive revenues for any of these funds, whether it's COVID relief, whether it's direct assistance to immigrant families, whether it is affordable housing or Green New Deal avenues, you know, programs. But the problem is that if the overall numbers of dollars are small, then it doesn't matter how much we say we are committed to each, each of them is going to get very, very little funding, and each of them is going to struggle against the other. So rather than pitting all of these social needs, which are equally urgent, we should make more revenues possible. It's just a simple, as I said, mathematics. So, you know, I'm nothing beyond that, but I feel like that is the most important point under consideration.
Thank you.
Councilmember Juarez, any additional comments?
No, I just want to thank Councilmember Sawat.
Okay, thank you. Dan Eider, I just want to ask if you could please put Amendment 17, just for the purposes of, there of seeing the same effect statement. I see Councilmember Strauss.
Thank you, Budget Chair Mosqueta, and thank you to the sponsor of this amendment and Councilmember Juarez for having discussion on, on this amendment. I think that the spending priorities on this amendment are right and correct. I am still interested in maintaining the rates that the Budget Chair has put forward, so I wanted to ask the question. I know that we will be getting to the spending plan at a later portion of this committee hearing. I want to just double-check that there is an opportunity to fund Green New Deal and weatherization programs later, later today. I guess it will be this afternoon, shortly later this afternoon.
Thank you, Councilmember Strauss. You led into my comments. I will, I will make some comments about that, just as a reminder to folks. We are going to get into the details of the spend plan allocations in the discussion that will come up on the 17th. If you're asking if the categories of spending include Green New Deal-type efforts, I think that is correct. I see Ally nodding, and to allow for the central staff to provide you with the official answer, I wonder, Ally, if you'd like to take yourself off of mute to comment on the categories of spend and how that will tee us up for potential conversation in addition to this discussion in the July 15th meeting.
You too, Chair Mosqueta. Councilmembers, the proposed substitute to the, the spending plan bill includes a specific category for Green New Deal investments. So it would allow for use of the tax proceeds for specific, specific to Green New Deal or as part, or to fall under other categories. So as Chair Mosqueta said, it would be authorized category of spending that would be included in the initial spending plan, Council Bill 119811, and then could get further detailed in terms of the specific allocation of funds for that category and any programmatic details you wanted to provide through the resolution that would be discussed later in July.
Thank you, Ally. Council colleagues, I'll provide a few comments on this. Councilmember Sawat, thank you for bringing forward this amendment. First, I want to note that the underlying amendment that we have in front of us brings forward at least another known $40 million, and we will have the opportunity to have a robust discussion about the spend allocation on the July 15th meeting. I know that making sure that the Green New Deal and energy efficiency elements, including weatherization for not just existing buildings, but used as a way to prevent displacement, is a really important issue for this council and a number of council members. I would like to signal that I am going to vote no on this amendment. However, I think that there is a lot of shared interest in making sure that we elevate elements of the Green New Deal in the final spend plan. I look forward to working with you all on amendments that would complement the funding that is already included in the jumpstart spend plan for deep green affordable housing. That includes retrofitting and construction and strong labor standards included in the plan, and would require deep green building standards on new affordable housing created through this existing plan. Creating green affordable housing near transit, as this plan already discusses, with strong labor standards, is one of the best ways that we can make sure that we combat climate change. But in addition to that, I think the call from both the sponsor of this amendment and other members of the council, in addition to the community, have underscored the importance for us to explore other ways to focus on anti-displacement investments on existing low-income homeowners and other energy efficiency strategies to assist with renewable energy sources and creating the retrofits needed for our community to address Green New Deal. sources and creating the retrofits needed for our community to address Green New Deal. So I'm voting no on this amendment, but I am signaling to you that I think that this is an important discussion that we will have in the spend plan discussion and amendments on the fifteenth. And the categories that Ally just outlined clearly make it sure that this item will be on our agenda to discuss on the fifteenth as part of the spend plan. And, and again, adding forty million to the base amount that is known, plus the additional amount over one billion, will make sure that there's additional dollars to go around. I understand your point that there needs to be direct dollars allocated to additional Green New Deal elements. I don't want to, you know, I, I don't want to miss that point that you said. I appreciate that and I see your hand up, so we'll come back to you before we close out. But I do think that there is ample time to have a conversation about how much dollars go into each categories when we have that spend plan detailed discussion on the fifteenth. So for that reason, today I'll be voting no on this amendment, but support the ongoing conversation and allocations through, through discussion and amendments in, on the fifteenth. Any additional comments? Okay, Councilmember Swant, do you want to close this out on this item?
I, I, I just wanted to say, of course, we, we are going to come back to the spend allocation, as it's called, but for, just, just for people who are watching this, what that means is basically the council will be coming back in a few days to discuss how much, when, if and when we vote on an Amazon tax today, which I hope we do. We will then discuss how much of those dollars should go to each of the programs that council members have declared their interest in. And as I've said before, I, we, my office, Socialist Alternative, our movement supports all of those categories. That's what we've been fighting for, which is the reason we are even here today for the couns- with the council, perhaps about to take a vote. And I agree that there is ample time to discuss how much for each category. But just one point I would reiterate is that today we are talking about how much we're going to raise as total revenues. And as I said, I'm going to support the amendment to raise the additional forty million dollars, but even that won't cover the fifty million dollars of the basic funding that we're talking about for Green New Deal additionally, in addition to also funding COVID relief, direct assistance to households and affordable housing. And not to mention, we don't have money allocated for the housing for African-American households to come back to the central district, because all, if all of it is struggling against each other, then only some will be funded. And I'm in complete agreement with the language that we have all used about how, how we are committed to all of this, but if you don't have the money, then you don't have the money to fund actual things. And as I said, we are not talking about moving around of funds, we're talking about additional funds, and that's why I would urge a yes vote on this amendment. Thank you.
Additional comments? Okay, hearing no additional comments. Again, Councilmember Swant, thank you for your comments. We will provide ample time for this discussion if this amendment does not pass for the fifteenth. And I think it would be helpful as, just a nod to central staff, Ally, if we can continue to work with you to identify what is in the current allocation for the spend plan as we think about layering additional pieces that are Green New Deal complements in the future. Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll on amendment C to amendment twenty?
Strauss?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye. Nay, nay, I'm sorry.
All right. Councilmember Herbold?
No.
Juarez?
No.
Lewis?
No.
Morales? Peterson?
No.
Swant?
Aye.
Chair Mosqueta?
No.
One in favor, eight, eight opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. On the motion for C, the amendment fails, are there any additional amendments to amendment twenty that folks would like to discuss? I have not seen any, but I wanted to just double check. Okay, council colleagues, we have in front of us amendment twenty. It has been described by central staff and Councilmember Morales and I as the co-sponsors of this amendment. Are there other conversations, are there other conversations? Are there, is there any other debate that people would like to have or items that they'd like to say about this before we consider amendment twenty? Please go ahead, Councilmember Swant.
Thank you. Just, I just wanted to make one clarifying point for the activists and community members who are watching this, that for the amendments that the community and the movement is strongly fighting for that don't win today, just wanted to remind everybody that we will be building a real campaign around the people's budget and that, that we should continue pushing for the things that we, we believe our community needs and that we should continue the conversation after today.
Thank you, Councilmember Swant. Councilmember Morales, as co-sponsor, would you like to say any closing comments before the final vote?
Thank you, Councilmember Morales, no, that's me, Councilmember Mosqueta. I just want to thank everybody. I do want to thank central staff in particular, Ally, Tom, Mike, Tracy, sorry, Dan and Tracy, for the incredible work that you have done. I know that, I know that you're, you've been working hours and hours. Your dedication to public service is commendable and you have been working tirelessly for families in our city while sacrificing time with your own families. And we know that you haven't had a break since the beginning of the year. So I want to thank you for your time and your talent and your acumen and your intellect. And I do hope that you get some respite this holiday weekend. And I just want to thank colleagues for, for this consideration. We have a, we have a real opportunity to, to make an important structural change in our city. And I know that this is going to be an important, an important change in how we generate revenue in the city. And this amendment can help us move dramatically toward providing opportunities to invest in our communities, to invest in housing. And as we've been saying, once we have a chance to talk about the spend plan, invest in building community wealth and, and in, you know, transitioning away from fossil fuels. So this is, this is a huge win for our community and, and I want to thank the advocates and the partners who have helped us get here.
Well said. Thank you very much, Councilmember Morales. I also just want to say thank you, thank you to our entire council. You've been very helpful with thinking through ways for us to not only raise revenue with the initial proposals that were introduced, but how to continually push for that dollar amount to go up. I really appreciate the amendments and the conversations we've had today. These will not go away, as Councilmember Swant mentioned. We will have ongoing discussions over the next week and a half here about that dedicated spend plan and want to signal my ongoing support for additional affordable housing and working with the council colleagues and community members. I think we can potentially find ways to do the geographic specific locations for historically marginalized communities, specifically a black-owned, black homeowners and black and brown communities to have more affordable housing. So look forward to be working with you on that possible strategy. Again, just echoing my interest in continuing to strengthen language around anti-displacement investments for existing homeowners and assisting with conversion for more renewable energy sources and retrofits throughout the city. So just flagging those conversations are ongoing. Really excited about the proposal that's in front of us to continue to bring the known dollar amount up by forty million dollars. And we'll continue to, we'll continue to, to have the discussion here about the other components in the bill, so this is not the end. But it does bring us to the end of the category, oh, not sorry, the end of A, B, and C discussion on amendment twenty. And if this passes right now, we will be able to know that we will have two hundred and fourteen point three million dollars in hand to provide immediate relief for COVID-related issues, help stem the tide of cuts that will be coming next year within all austerity budget by having revenue in hand. We can address that. And then the out years really create a resilient community that's more equitable and provides affordable housing and, and the appropriate shelter for folks so that people can get off the street. With that, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on amendment twenty?
Strauss?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Herbold?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Morales?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Swant?
Aye.
Chair Mosqueta?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Wonderful, thank you. It is unanimous, the motion carries and the amendment is adopted. Before we leave the tax structure rate amendments, Councilmember Swant, you did have amendment eleven. Did you want to talk about that? I'm not sure exactly what, what the, what you'd like to do there, but I want to give you a chance to talk about that.
Yes, I would like to quickly talk about that and then to start by saying that this amendment, just again, a technical clarification to reiterate it, is not in conflict with amendment twenty, as was asserted before. For years, our movement has been demanding tax Amazon and other big businesses, tax on Amazon and other big businesses. And the goal is to end the corporate tax haven and actually meet human needs. And as many stated in public comment today and before, if we vote on an Amazon tax legislation today, it will be because of the movement and entirely because of the thousands of people who have been fighting on the front lines for this. And that includes many who have been on the front lines for the Black Lives Matter movement and the movement against police violence and to end racism and oppression, because they understand that it is connected to also ending racist gentrification and, and ending the criminal underfunding of public schools and all the other needs that we have in our society. That hits, the underfunding hits the communities of color the hardest. And as I said, it will be a moment of pride for the movement if we have the city council today pass an Amazon tax legislation. But we also have to be sober about how much is accomplished at the same time. So this amendment is to, once again, as I've said many times before, to provide enough revenues to be commensurate with the level of the, what's needed in terms of COVID relief, social housing, Green New Deal projects. And last but not least, living wage jobs, which is going to be an increasingly important criterion as we head deeper into this cruel jobless recession. Restoring this funding level will build more than ten thousand social homes, retrofit tens of thousands of homes to Green New Deal standards and create or support thirty-four thousand jobs in the first decade alone. Imagine what a transformation that would be in the context of the recession that we are facing, as Harvard economist Kenneth S. Rogoff has said, "We might see the mother of all financial crises." A report commissioned last year by the Seattle Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce, I, I don't think they like the conclusions of this study, but it found that four hundred and ten million dollars need to be spent urgently in the greater Seattle area each year to address the housing crisis. And earlier this year, the Mackenzie study found that the region had lost a hundred and twelve thousand affordable homes since two thousand and ten. And that was, you know, that was all pre-COVID and pre-pandemic. And so we now have, you know, triple crisis of COVID pandemic, the housing unaffordability, and now joblessness. If we don't raise the revenues commensurate with the crisis, we simply will not be able to accomplish what we say we want to accomplish. And so I would urge a second for this amendment and a vote for this amendment.
Amendment number eleven has been moved. Is there a second? Hearing none, the motion fails. Thank you very much to central staff for your work to get us through this. I want to continue to move through the other amendments here, council colleagues, and we'll have some closing comments at the end as well, if you would like to talk about the overall package, the amount that's been raised. And we have about another hour and a half here, hoping to give us at least a twenty or thirty minute break for lunch, but I think we can do it, guys. Let's do this. So let's move on to the next slide to get us into other amendments. And if you could be so kind, as we do discuss these, once we've gone through the high-level overview where there may be conflicts, if you could put the effect statement on the screen as well. Thank you very much.
Okay. So the third category and last category of amendments that should be on your screen now are divided in turn into three subgroups. The first subgroup at the top of your screen are amendments that are freestanding and each can be considered on its own without affecting any other amendment. So if you'll allow me a brief moment, I will bring up amendment number one, which is sponsored by Councilmembers Swant and Herbold. Okay. This amendment would change the imposition date of the payroll tax from January first of two thousand and twenty-one. It would move it forward in time so that the tax would begin to be imposed on August one of two thousand and twenty. This would add approximately seventy-four and a half million dollars of additional revenue when the tax begins to be generated. The two thousand and twenty-one tax bills would be due at the same time as the additional months in two thousand and twenty, so that all of the first payments would be due on February one of two thousand and twenty-two. The entire amount, approximately a hundred and seventy-three and a half million dollars for two thousand and twenty-one collections, plus seventy-four point five million dollars of two thousand and twenty collections would all be available for spending in the two thousand and twenty-one budget.
Thank you very much, Dan. Why don't we go ahead and have you, if there's nothing in conflict with this, is this a standalone item? Okay.
This is a standalone item.
Okay. Council colleagues, this has been put forward to us from Councilmembers Swant and Herbold. Council colleagues, would you like to move, Councilmember Herbold?
Thank you. I move to amend Council Bill eleven ninety-eight ten as presented on amendment one.
It's been moved? Second? It's been seconded?
Second.
Wonderful, thank you. Amendment number one is in front of us for discussion and debate. Are there comments? Councilmember Herbold and then Councilmember Swant?
Thank you. So as mentioned by Council Central Staff, this amendment would generate an additional seventy-four point five million dollars in additional city revenue that would be collected on February first, two thousand and twenty-two. It would be eligible for spending in two thousand and twenty-one. I, I have heard some concerns that in order for it to be, uh, the imposition date to be in August, two thousand and twenty, the eligibility trigger has to be based on two thousand and nineteen revenues. I just want to remember, remind folks that even though that is the case, the, the businesses will only be taxed for the number of jobs over the income thresholds in two thousand and twenty-one. So the, so for instance, if a business is deemed to be eligible based on two thousand and twenty-nine revenues of, of more than seven million dollars, but in two thousand and twenty, there, that, that business's gross revenue, gross payroll, sorry, not gross revenues, gross payroll, i- if in twenty, uh, twenty-one, I'm sorry, I'm getting my, my numbers mixed up. If in two thousand and nineteen, the gross payroll is seven million or more, they, that business is then eligible. But if it turns out in two thousand and twenty, that business's gross revenue has, has, or gross payroll has dropped to, say, six million dollars, that business would still be eligible to, to pay the tax, but they will only be having to pay the tax on the, the incomes above the income thresholds, the, the number of, of incomes. The, the number of, of incomes uh, above the uh, income thresholds in two thousand and twenty. So if there's any concern that uh, jobs that were uh, or, or incomes, salaries that were eligible in two thousand and nineteen would be taxed regardless of whether or not that same number of jobs uh, existed in, in two thousand and twenty. The way uh, the structure of uh, the, the legislation i- is drafted, that would not be the case. I'm, I, I'm, I fear that was as clear as mud, but I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to respond to the concerns um, I have heard from um, the uh, uh, the Budget Chair um, about this amendment and trying to sort of ameliorate um, some of those concerns. Um, and, and, and trying to offer some, some reassurances um, about um, the, the concerns about impacts on this.
Appreciate, I appreciate you doing that. Um, Councilmember Swant.
Thank you and uh, thank you, Councilmember Herbald, for the clarifications. This amendment would bring in additional seventy-four million dollars, which are urgently needed funds, especially as we uh, sit here in the middle of the pandemic. And so this would undoubtedly help, that, that's seventy-four point five million dollars. This is it is a small amount for a big business and any delay would be that money left in big businesses' pocket, which they actually don't need, but seventy-four point five million dollars for our community, which, which would make uh, it, it would make a hu- huge difference in terms of how much, uh, how quickly and how widely we can provide dollars for affordable housing and uh, to uh, provide a relief from the pandemic. And I just wanted to point out that original, the original legislation from our movement for the Amazon tax was going to start on June first. And unfortunately, we now cannot get those two months back that the city council ended up delaying, but I hope that the council supports this amendment because i- it, it is a, it is a small change as far as big businesses concerned, but it would mean a lot to the communities who need these funds. And just lastly, I would say that many in public comment and many have written to you in emails to the council uh, that uh, we should not delay a vote on this. Uh, but I think they also meant not only that vote on the Amazon tax today, but also don't delay the disbursement of funds that communities can begin uh, healing from those dollars.
Thank you, Councilmember Swant. Are there additional comments? Okay, uh, Councilmember Strauss. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Chair Mosqueta. I think that uh, well, I will share that I'll be voting no on this amendment. I think that it is important to allow for businesses time to prepare for this tax. As we all know, two thousand and nineteen is a very different year than this year, and this year will be a very different year than next year. And I think i- I believe in the importance of moving quickly on the passage of this legislation and the need to provide predictability and the ability for taxpayers to be sta- able to stabilize between now and January. I think that this was, this was an important aspect of the proposal that you put together for me. And I will, I would like to retain the January two thousand and twenty-one date. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Strauss. Additional comments? Councilmember Morales.
I um, I uh, thank you, Councilmember Mosqueta. I, sorry, I have a nine-year-old running around here. She's very distracting. Um, I want to uh, signal my support for this. Um, as Councilmember Swant mentioned, we did try with the previous legislation um, to have something begin sooner, even if it won't be collected until later. I think um, the ability to assess sooner um, and bring in additional um, additional revenue to the city, especially right now as we have a three hundred million dollar shortfall is uh, is an important um, option on the table that we should take advantage of. So I want to signal that I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Councilmember Morales. Seeing no other hands, council colleagues, I'll um, chime in here as well. I want to thank the sponsors of this amendment. I too support making sure that we get uh, increased revenue, but I will be voting no on today's amendment. Um, amendment number one, unfortunately, I cannot support um, the effective date uh, as on August first of two thousand and twenty would rely on data from companies that have not yet adjusted to the new business reality in a post-COVID world. And I think as we want to see a, a revenue come in to make sure that there is relief for um, food assistance, housing assistance, small business support, um, um, stability for immigrants and refugees. We all have that sh- same goal. But allowing for the revenue to be collected in two thousand and twenty-two based on two thousand and twenty-one um, uh, payroll data allows for us to have a better understanding of which of the businesses that are currently here will continue to be here in next year's um, uh, budget cycle. Um, and for that reason alone, I am voting no today. Councilmember Swant to close this out, and then I'll also ask Councilmember Herbald if she has additional comments.
Thank you. Uh, uh, I just wanted to clarify whether the start date is August or January, businesses won't have to pay any tax until early two thousand and twenty-two, so I'm not exactly clear what uh, the argument is from councilmembers for uh, the businesses needing time. And uh, I also w- want to put this in perspective. Uh, you know, there's uh, this uh, conversation about, oh, taxpayers need time to prepare. We're talking about the largest corporations in our city. And by that measure, some of the most stable corporations in our city to pa- prepare to pay something like a point seven percent tax rate when working-class families have been paying something like a seventeen percent tax rate year after year. And as far as giving the largest and the most stable and the most cash um, stable, you know, cash-rich uh, corporations time to prepare, uh, working people who lost their jobs. Uh, you know, now, uh, by now, a- around forty-five million nationwide, they had no preparation. Nobody told them you're gonna have a year to prepare or several months to prepare for this massive cratering in your financial situation. People were just laid off because that's the reality of recession. It hits working people. Uh, and so I uh, I would urge you all to vote yes on this amendment.
Thank you, Councilmember Swant. Councilmember Herbald, as a co-sponsor of this, is, are there any additional closing comments from you? Okay.
Yes, um.
Oh, so sorry. Please go ahead.
Yes, thank you.
Video was moving on, just in case you need it.
My uh, my cursor was not moving to the mute button very quickly. Um, so yes, thank you so much. I appreciate the um, opportunity um, to offer um, one last pitch for this amendment. I think it's critically important uh, considering um, that we know that um, years uh, two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two are going to be very difficult years for our city, um, not just as it relates to the delivery of city services, um, but also um, as it relates to the need to consider um, layoffs of city staff. Um, and so that is, uh, I think why this, one of the reasons why this amendment is, is so important. We talk about uh, not wanting to do austerity budgeting. Um, we know that it is going to be even harder uh, next year to um, even with this new revenue source, to um, to maintain uh, our, our, our current planned investments um, as well as uh, maintaining um, the sta- city staff necessary to deliver those investments. Uh, and so I think uh, in order to uh, really adhere to uh, the principles of uh, of non-austerity budgeting, um, we need to be looking forward to two thousand and twenty-one where our city budget director has, has warned us um, that even with new revenue, we are um, going to be needing to consider uh, layoffs or furloughs. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbald. Okay, seeing no additional comments. Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of amendment one?
Strauss.
Nay.
Council President Gonzalez.
No.
Herbald.
Aye.
Juarez.
No.
Lewis.
No.
Morales.
Aye.
Peterson.
No.
Swant.
Aye.
Chair Mosqueta.
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry. No.
Three in favor, six opposed.
Wonderful. Six opposed. Got you. Okay, um, three in favor, six opposed. The amendment fails and the amendment is not adopted. Central staff, thank you so much. We have about another hour and ten minutes. Um, let's move on to I, amendment number five.
Okay, uh, amendment five is sponsored by councilmembers Peterson and Juarez. Um, this amendment would um, require voter approval of the tax before uh, it, the tax itself becomes effective. Um, a second step, if this uh, uh, if this amendment is passed, uh, would be for the council to take up a, a separate piece of legislation that would place the tax on the um, November ballot. And in order to do so, uh, council would need to um, authorize such um, uh, legislation by August fourth, which is uh, King County records and elections cutoff for notification that jurisdictions want to place any items on the November twenty-twenty ballot.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Councilmember Peterson and Juarez, this is your amendment. Would you like to uh, move it?
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Budget Chair. I'd like to move to amend Council Bill one-one-nine-eight-one-zero with amendment number five to put this tax measure on to the November ballot.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Um, councilmembers, as sponsors of this amendment, if you'd like to speak to it first, please go ahead. Councilmember Peterson or Juarez? Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. I can go first. Um, so we discussed this a little bit at council briefing, and I know that in the not-so-distant past, there were some councilmembers who were interested in if there were a major business tax measure to put that on the ballot for voters to consider. Um, it would be put on the ballot this November, and if voters approve it, it would start January first in just six months. Um, depending on which amendments passed today and what the final spending plan is, the, the Jump Start Seattle proposal, I, I believe, is generally well-crafted. Uh, yet it's also four times as large as the, the head tax. And we remember in two thousand and eighteen, the head tax, there were um, lots of concerns expressed in the general public and in the business community when it was um, finalized. And so, so that we don't have the same sort of um, backlash from that type of ordinance today. Um, putting it in front of the voters to decide, I think, is prudent. Uh, it's also, I believe, will be the largest tax that the city government has passed in um, what, in recent history, and it's very typical to put ballot, to put tax measures on the ballot for people to decide. We do that for um, like the Move Seattle levy, for example, the Families Education levy, housing levy, and for other good purposes. Um, we put that on the ballot for voters to decide. Also, I believe putting it on the ballot would insulate it from a referendum. So if you put it on the ballot, um, the voters will, will make that a permanent law if they pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Juarez, did you want to chime in?
Yes, thank you very much. Um, I'm just gonna be very brief, but I do agree with everything Councilwoman Peterson said, but let me do a couple thank yous in here, because I think it's important for the um, city to hear us, for those of us that were around the first time this came. Um, I really want to thank Councilmember Swant. I've been serving with her since two thousand and sixteen and her long history of promoting a progressive tax and her movement. Um, I also want to thank you, Councilwoman Mosqueta, because um, we've been able, oh, been able to have open and honest discussions about where, where we agree and where we disagree, and we're still cool. So I appreciate that. So let me be clear. I support a progressive tax. I supported the countywide approach in the spring of two thousand and nineteen and worked closely with state leadership as well as Seattle City Council and some county folks as well. I still support a countywide approach, and I'll tell you why, and why I still believe that this should go on the ballot. It's the same concern that I've been saying since February, March. And now we are in what we call this trifecta of a global pandemic, a recession, and political and social unrest based on racism and unequal inequity policing and all of those issues that we've been discussing for the last six months. We don't know the length, the duration, the continued human destruction and toll this global pandemic will inflict on our humanity and our people's lives. We don't know the depth, the length, and the duration of this pandemic-fueled recession will have on our economic landscape in the future. Right now, we do know, as was stated earlier this morning, we do have a three hundred million budget shortfall. I guess what I'm concerned the most about is that, since there's a lot of unknowns, and I know we try to determine and try to make up for that with staff and looking at pre-COVID conditions. Um, making um, determinations about what this recession is gonna look like, uh, what data, uh, the unpredictable revenue and forecasts. For me, and I know the facts can be used the other way as well, like that's precisely why we need a tax from the Seattle City Council again. But I think it should go to the voters. I'm in short, because we don't know the COVID effects of the recession and what the revenue will be. Um, and the long-term effects, I think it should go to the voters. So let me just say one last thing. Seattle has the well-established democratic tradition of giving voters the final say. In the last fifteen years, Seattle voters have approved over eleven city levies from library to housing to education to transportation to parks. Seattle voters have also supported over six countywide levies for human services, seniors, children, and parks. And Seattle voters have supported two multi-billion-dollar regional levies for transportation, that is, sound transit. In two thousand and six, Seattle voters approved bridging the gap, a transportation measure which included a small local payroll tax on business, basically a head tax. In two thousand and eighteen, I believe council made an error. The council passed the payroll tax, discovered it was out of touch with voter sentiment, and promptly repealed it. I was one of those that voted to repeal it. I can go into those details another time. I think to ensure that the taxation meets with public expectations, it needs to be put out for voter approval. I agree with what Councilmember Peterson said. I really like how Councilwoman Mosqueta reached out, nailed down the specifics, talked to business, talked to labor, um, talked to myself, talked to particular groups about how this tax would actually work. My concern is that I believe the voters should have the final say. I like the Jump Start proposal because it does limit the tax's impact to high-paying jobs, protecting low and middle-income jobs. It provides for small businesses and investment in our most vulnerable communities, in communities, people of color, while also building more affordable housing. I think it's a great proposal to put in front of the voters in the spirit of democracy and giving all the voters a final say. Um, and with that, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Juarez and Councilmember Peterson as co-sponsors of this. Council colleagues, um, I'm going to signal that I will be voting no on this amendment today. I do appreciate the spirit in which the amendment was brought forward. I know that in the comments that the co-sponsors have made now and previously, we are in alignment. We want to see relief for COVID um, in the near term. We want to make sure small businesses and working families have the housing and support that they need in the out years, and we want to soften the blow of an all austerity budget by providing progressive revenue. Um, I know that there is a shared um, values on what this potential proposal could do. I am going to be voting no, though, because I just don't think that we can wait for a November ballot. We know that there's immediate relief that needs to get out this summer, and by passing this progressive revenue package uh, council-matically, we can rely or we can have assurances that those emergency funds will be replenished um, by doing the councilmatic vote today. Um, and hopefully next week on Monday, we also know that then we can book additional revenue in our two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two budget, um, which we would not be able to do if it were a November ballot. So I really appreciate um, the conversations that we've had, uh, just like other pieces of legislation as we work with folks in the community to identify um, the stakeholders that, that would be impacted or would benefit from legislation. A robust conversation has happened, um, and I would encourage folks to vote on this um, at piece of legislation council-matically, and let's, let's, let's pass this so that we can rely on this revenue now for emergency relief and to book it in our two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two um, budgets. Is there any additional comments before we move to vote? Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you. Thanks for those comments, Chair Mosqueta. Um, just to clarify for folks, this is to put the payroll tax measure on the ballot, not to put the uh, the other council bill that deals specifically with COVID relief. Um, which we will be voting on separately to use the emergency fund and the revenue stabilization fund to deal with COVID relief. I do- I do support elements of that. You, you make a good point, Budget Chair Mosqueta, that to ensure the replenishment of those funds, it would help to have this other source in the future, the payroll tax. I, I believe that's something that we could visit later, that putting this on the ballot would not, does not mean we can't support the, we, we still can support the COVID relief using the emergency funds, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson, for your comments and clarification. Additional comments, Councilmember Morales?
Just quickly, I want to say that, you know, we are, I, I don't support this amendment. I feel like we, as elected leaders, are elected to make hard decisions, including, you know, voting on, on, on tax packages, including, you know, saying no to large corporations. That's not a hard decision for me personally, but what, what is also not hard for me in, in wanting to pass this now, is that I hear, every time we have another levy on the ballot, I hear from low-income homeowners in my community who are on the brink of getting pushed out of the city because they can't afford to keep bearing the burden of all of these, all of these levies. This is a way for us to shift that burden away from low-income homeowners so that they don't have to continue to bear that burden, and I don't think that waiting several more months to put this on the ballot serves them, serves my district, and for that reason, I will not be supporting this amendment.
Okay, Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta, I just wanted to also just quickly chime in on this particular amendment. I appreciate the remarks made by Councilmembers Peterson and Juarez, and, you know, understand and their intent here. I do think that, that the sentiment of the public has drastically changed in the, the last couple of years, since we considered the prior, prior tax on large corporations. I also think that this is fundamentally different than the employee hours tax that we proposed in 2018, then unfortunately, we repeat, we were, we were put in a position to have to repeal it. And, and, and primarily, I say that because this tax is a, is a payroll tax, and if, for folks who, who weren't around in 2018, the head tax that we had originally proposed was supposed to evolve into a payroll tax after, I believe, two years. And, and that was something, that concept, that model, actually was being advocated by, by members in the business community at the time, as something that would be more scalable and more progressive and more easily absorbed, particularly by smaller-sized businesses. So it was discussed as a more equitable way to pursue this type of revenue, and so I'm, I'm of the mind now that, that this is the right approach and that this is the right model, meaning that the payroll tax way that this Jumpstart Seattle has been structured in, I think, is the, is, is, is the right choice for us to go. Now, in terms of the argument around whether or not this should be on the ballot or not, there have been some citations by the sponsors of this amendment to the housing levy, education levy, transit levies, a whole host of other levies, but I, I think it's really important for us to be clear with each other and with the public that those levies were property tax levies, and in some instances, they were sales tax levies. Now, those are taxes that are levied against individual people throughout the city at a mass proportion. So it means that 100% of every person who owns property or rents property, or who purchases goods within our city, would be subject to that tax liability. It is appropriate, under those circumstances, to send those kinds of revenue proposals to the general public to undergo the, the democratic process and to have people, individuals, at a mass rate throughout the city who are going to incur a tax liability as a result of those proposals, to say yes or no to whether or not they want to tax themselves as individuals in order to continue to fund services that the city can provide, whether that's quality preschool, whether it's additional affordable housing, whether it's more transit services, that, that is appropriate for us to propose that to the, the voters of the city of Seattle to, to accept that tax liability. This is fundamentally different, because we're talking about a payroll tax that will, that will impose tax liability on a small number of corporations, which, you know, in spite of the Supreme Court's decision, they are not people, they are not humans, and, and this is a very small percentage of the overall population or constituency in the, in the city of Seattle. So I believe it's appropriate for the city council to take councilmanic action as it relates to the imposition of this payroll tax, and I would urge, urge my colleagues to reject this amendment and to support the concept that as a representative democracy that is the city council, that we have the authority and indeed the urgent need to take action on this payroll tax today. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Council President. Folks, I am going to call the question. I do think that Council, Councilmember Juarez would like to speak to this. I have given the council sponsors the opportunity to speak to it in closing out, so I'd like to call the question.
Thank you.
Madam, Councilmember Juarez, Councilmember Herbold, I really do want us to move on, so, okay, very briefly.
Thank you, I'm sorry, and I just really feel the need to, to speak to my support, I'm sorry, my, my opposition to this amendment because of prior support that I have expressed to putting a, a big business tax on, on the, on the ballot, I, I think I, as recently as probably April, said that I, I believe that that was the way that we should go. My, my opinion is very different right now, for many of the reasons that we've already heard. This is not fundamentally, not a tax on individuals, so I think the comparisons to property tax levies are not applicable, and I, I do agree with the urgency of this council to act now. But I also want to identify part of the reason for my change in position is because the fundamental structure of this type of payroll tax is different from that, what was, that was originally proposed, and the reason why I believe that's so important is because it mirrors a proposal that was introduced at the state legislature that the business community has signaled some support for. And so, my fears about the council acting really relate to not wanting to repeat the experiences that we all, those of us on the council who, who were on the council at the time experienced, where there was a legitimate threat of, of referendum after council passage of the employee hours tax. I believe, and I call on the business community, to not replicate that scenario, because what we are putting forward now largely represents the same structure that there is broad support in the business community for advancing in the state legislature. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbold, I want to turn it over to Councilmember Juarez to close this out. Thank you, Councilmember Juarez.
Thank you, and thank you for everyone that responded, and I want to respond on three levels here. First of all, I want to make it very clear that we know how to make hard decisions, and some of us have made hard decisions to the detriment of our own personal safety. I agree with what Councilmember Gonzalez said, and I do agree that the sentiment of the public has changed drastically, and that's why I do still trust the voters. I understand the difference between a property tax and a corporate tax, and the analogy that I was listing and the taxes that I rattled off went to the underlying sentiment that, basically, Seattle voters have been generous in voting yes, whether we're talking about a property tax, or we're talking about a levy, and hopefully when we're talking about taxing corporations. I understand that corporations are not people, I, I understand Citizens United, but that's not what I'm getting at, I'm not comparing apples and oranges and this and that. What I'm saying is, the underlying character here for me, why I think it goes on a ballot, is because I believe that the voters under this Jumpstart Seattle would vote yes, and I think they would vote yes, because we still, even though the conditions have changed, and we're in the middle of this, again, trifecta of a pandemic, of a recession, and social unrest, I believe in the goodwill of the people, that they can look around and see what we see and vote yes. So that's where my faith lies. I don't want to get into a debate about corporations and a property, and why things are different, and, I mean, I get that, but there is a bedrock here of generosity of Seattle voters, and that's what I was getting to. So I understand, and I'll close it, I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Juarez. Colleagues, I would like to call the question. Councilmember Peterson, I saw you take yourself off mute, just to close this out as a co-sponsor, I'll let you speak to it, and then I have, I really need to move us on.
Thank you, I just want to point out that I, I support progressive taxation, I supported House Bill 2907, I'm, I'm sorry, it didn't pass, one of the key differences is that was regional, and I think there was a lot more support for that because it was regional and specifically addressed the crisis of homelessness, which is different what we have before us today, and so I just wanted to make that note, thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to go back to my comments, which were, I appreciate the spirit in which this was put forward, I know that there is agreement among council members about the need for dollars and the need for the spend, appreciate the comments that were made today, and going to call the question. Council Clerk, will you please call the roll on Amendment Number Five?
Strauss?
Nay.
Council President Gonzalez?
No.
Herbold?
No.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
No.
Morales?
No.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sawant?
May.
Chair Mosqueta?
No.
Two opposed? Two in favor, seven opposed?
With a vote of two to seven, the motion fails, the amendment is not adopted. Central staff, could you please move us on to Amendment Number Eight, the last in this first category here? Do we still have central staff with us? And as they tee up their screens and get their audio going, just filibustering, this is Amendment Number Eight, sponsored by Councilmember Peterson, on nonprofit exemptions. Dan, are you with us? Amelia? Just want to check in to see if we have IT folks who are able to, oh, hi Dan.
Hi, sorry about that.
We got you, that's okay. Before you go on, Dan, I just want to make sure that IT can confirm that they can hear you, because I heard some folks saying that they couldn't hear you very well, so we may need to turn up your volume or have you speak louder, okay?
Okay, is this, is this okay for folks?
Why don't you go ahead, and if I get notification that they can't hear you, because I can hear you fine, we'll let you know, but try to speak up a little bit if you can.
Okay, very good. Hang on one sec, please.
And IT folks, if you can try to see if you can turn up, Dan, that would be helpful too, but Dan, I can definitely hear you.
Okay, so this is Council Bill, sorry, Amendment Number Eight is sponsored by Councilmember Peterson. It would exempt all nonprofits from the payroll tax. The definition of nonprofits, I won't read, but is on your, should be on your screen now, it effectively would exempt all 501(c)(3) type nonprofits. The effect box in the second paragraph describes central staff's estimate and, and methodology for coming up with the estimate, or how this would affect the estimate of tax revenues that would flow from the approval of the bill if this amendment passes. The information that, and data that we have from the Employment Security Department at the state has one category for both nonprofits and hospitals of all types, both nonprofit and for-profit hospitals. So we have essentially only one toggle that we can throw that captures the broad description of nonprofits that would be exempted here, and when we throw that toggle, our, our read of the EST data is that exempting nonprofits along with all hospitals would reduce otherwise-anticipated 2021 tax revenues by $9.2 million. I want to just note that we acknowledge that the $9.2 million is likely on the high side of what the actual reduction would be, because it includes some types of hospitals that are, that are for-profit, who would not be subject to the exemption in, in the, in the amendment. It also potentially includes other kinds of nonprofits, such as 501(c)(4)'s and other kinds of nonprofits that are not 501(c)(3)'s. Be happy to address any questions, or I can turn this over to the sponsor to speak to his member.
Wait, I'm not seeing any questions. Councilmember Peterson, would you like to speak to your amendment, or move, I'm sorry, would you like to move your amendment?
Yes, thank you Chair, I move to amend Council Bill 119810 with Amendment Eight to exempt 501(c)(3) nonprofits.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Peterson, would you like to speak to your amendment?
Thank you, I, I think central staff, as usual, explained it very well. This amendment would exempt 501(c)(3) nonprofits. The, there was an exemption for nonprofits in other versions of payroll tax legislation, I support that exemption, I know, it, it seems like what we're trying to get at with this payroll tax, in addition to meeting certain needs, is that, you know, there have been statements made about large corporations, large corporations are able to, you know, are stable, are able to afford certain things, and I, I think it's important, then, that we exempt 501(c)(3) nonprofits who, who, who aren't, I think, we're trying to target with this, this payroll tax on large for-profit corporations.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson, appreciate the summary. Not seeing any immediate hands. Council colleagues, I'll, I'll provide some content, comments here, and if there's others who would like to chime in, please let me know. Thank you, Councilmember Peterson, for putting forward this amendment, I know that the spirit in which you've done this is to try to make sure that those who are nonprofits are also recognized for the role that they're playing, I believe, in COVID response. Just as a reminder, we have a $7 million threshold in Seattle payroll, and this is only applying to salaries starting at $150,000 or more. As we've heard from folks, the one area that I've heard, some questions raised about whether or not nonprofits could be exempted was specific to nonprofits in the healthcare world, and there is an amendment that I have teed up for us to discuss potentially next, which is Amendment Number 14, and would encourage folks to take a look at that amendment. I think that that might be a nice way to thread the intent of what I believe you were trying to get at, some of the concerns that were raised in nonprofits and healthcare, and the way in which the Amendment 14 is presented is only for a short period of time, it only applies to an exemption for the, the salaries between 150 and 400, so the higher-wage earners would still have an assessment there. I really appreciate that you have gone into the detail of your amendments, I will say, though, that in working with the broad group of stakeholders that I engaged with on the bill, the folks who were raising issues and wanting to see various changes, no exemption to nonprofit providers were flagged as a possible concern, and want to just say that many of the nonprofits that And want to just say that many of the nonprofits that are included here have, have been part of the coalition partners. So we'll continue to work with you. And if there's other stakeholders that have concerns, you know, I think I'm happy to hear those between now and Monday. But at this point, I would encourage folks to be a no on this amendment and instead potentially consider Amendment Number 14. Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I too want to thank Councilmember Peterson for bringing this amendment forward. And I will signal that I do intend to vote in favor of this amendment. Actually, I do think that it is equitable to exempt nonprofits from this tax, which I believe should fundamentally be a, a corporate tax on, with high marginal rates for big businesses. And indeed, I would also point out that Councilmember Sawant's taxing Amazon legislation, including an exemption for nonprofits. I think that it's just a, a good thing for us to incorporate into our various payroll tax proposals. And just wanted to signal that I do intend to vote in favor of this amendment.
Thank you. I saw Councilmember Strauss's hand up next.
Thank you, Budget Chair. And thank you, Councilmember Peterson, for bringing this amendment forward. I am conflicted about this amendment, and I, I will likely vote no. And I want to share my reasons why. That said, I, I'm still making up my mind as I hear other people's comments here as we govern in real time. I've been certified in nonprofit management. And that certificate, during that certification process, we learned important lessons about nonprofit and how to manage nonprofits. And really, it comes down to the fact that nonprofit is a tax status. You still operate your business in the same function. The only difference is that you do not funnel your profits into, you don't funnel your revenue into profits. Rather, you can still funnel them into salaries. You can still funnel them into programs. You can still funnel them into other ways. And so it, nonprofits simply being a tax status, it, it can, it makes me conflicted about this amendment. I, I do share your sentiment that we need to be supporting our nonprofits, and especially the nonprofits that are providing services to our community. And so you will see in the tax, in the, in the spending plan that I will be bringing forward an amendment to, to create eligibility for nonprofits who provide community services, the ability to apply for the stabilization funds. Now, again, that nuance is important because not all nonprofits are providing a benefit to our community. It is important and difficult to identify how to categorize a nonprofit that is providing a meaningful service to our community as compared to a nonprofit that is simply registered in a tax status form. So lots to think about. I overall want to thank the Council, the Councilmember Peterson for bringing this amendment forward and springing on the discussion. And thank you, Budget Chair, for the time.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other questions or comments.
Madam Chair?
Please, go ahead.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I, I texted you, but I don't expect you to be looking at your phone. But anyway, thank you. I had a question, and maybe you can respond to some of this in regards to some of your amendments. I will be supporting Councilmember Peterson's amendment. But I, first of all, thank you for answering the six pages of questions that our office sent to your staff. And you know that one of our questions was the medical for-profit and nonprofit, that that's an essential governmental service or product in this city. We have, provided by 58 hospitals and respective clinics throughout Seattle, including medical services to people of all income levels. So we wanted to know what the impact would be, Jump Start, on hospitals or clinics, or even a clinic like Planned Parenthood. So in regards to the University of Washington, which operates Harborview Hospital, they're facing a $500 million shortfall and recently furloughed 5,500 employees as a result of the economic impacts of the pandemic. And U-Dub must continue to respond to the pandemic and also pursue a large backup of medical cases that were put on hold during the initial months of the pandemic. So we've learned through Virginia Mason, other hospitals that have contacted us, that they're facing similar challenges. So I guess some of the question is, are some of these issues going to be addressed? Or how are they going to be addressed in your amendments in light of the layoffs in the medical facilities that are happening regionally? We know that Overlake Hospital has, had to furlough 150 employees. Multi-Care Tacoma had to furlough 6,000 employees. So the reason why I'm supporting this for the medical nonprofits is, I want to know who's left standing to tax when all of this pandemic-fueled recession hits us? And who's left where we can actually realize if we are looking at an additional $9.2 million that you think we would lose if they were not exempted? Correct me if I'm wrong. So, Madam Chair, can you answer that, that question for me? So I can be clear in my vote?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Juarez. And Councilmember Peterson as sponsor as well, you know, feel free to chime in. I would say that in Amendment Number 14, that we will consider here in just a moment, if the concern is specific to nonprofit medical entities, the language that I have proposed is trying to specifically get at that nonprofit threshold or that nonprofit sector. When we have nonprofits as a general category, it opens the conversation to exemptions much broader. And I understand the sentiment that you're raising, Councilmember Juarez, and I believe Councilmember Peterson spoke to that specific sector as well. But the attempt that I have in Amendment 14, which will be coming soon, is to try to offer a specific narrow exemption for those nonprofit medical entities. And those folks that you talked about, Councilmember Juarez, would be, would be covered in the amendment that is coming in Amendment 14. So that is, that is my answer to your question, specific to that sector. I see Councilmember Herbold and Councilmember Sawant. But before we move on, Councilmember Juarez, did that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. And I will continue to try to look for your box to light up and any messages from you. Councilmember Herbold, and then Councilmember Sawant, and then I'd love to call the question, guys.
Thank you. I just want to signal my intention to vote no on this amendment as well as the following two amendments, the exemption for nonprofit healthcare providers, as well as the exemption for for-profit healthcare providers that provide a certain percentage of charity care. The reason why I'm going to vote no is I accept that there are likely to be eligible nonprofits, both in the healthcare field and in the non-healthcare field. And there are, we know that there are payroll-eligible for-profits that are, that are hospitals that provide charity care. But the, the comparison to Councilmember Sawant's original bill, I don't think is an apt comparison because that bill included an exemption because the payroll tax was levied across all, all income jobs. And this particular bill is very targeted only on the payroll above $150,000. And I accept that there are individuals working at both nonprofit hospitals, non, non, healthcare nonprofits, and as well as for-profits that provide charity care that earn more than $150,000 a year. But the number of those employees, I believe, is relatively small as compared to the total number of employees under the Councilmember Sawant and Morales's original bill. And so the, the tax hit, I believe, is likely to be also relatively small because it is only based on those incomes over $150,000 a year. Thank you.
Councilmember Sawant to close this out before the sponsor.
Thank you. Just for starters, I would like to clarify again, once again, because it's sort of in the context that, something that we had all reiterated together in a previous budget committee, that both the move, our movements, Amazon Tax Bill and the bill that we're considering here today, they're both taxes on big businesses, on big corporations. And hence, they land on the top executives, the shareholders, not on the workers regardless of which section of the payroll you target. And, and essentially, Councilmember Herbold made the point I was going to make, which is that in our original legislation, we had a tax that was levied on the corporations' topmost individual, you know, the, the owners and the shareholders on the entire payroll. So it's not an apt comparison, as she said.
And Councilmember Peterson, any closing comments from you before we move to vote?
Thank you. And thanks, everybody, for your comments. And those are really good points about the $150,000 threshold being a key difference. I, I'm just thinking that if, I just think it'll be better for the payroll tax package as a whole if you exempt all nonprofits because it takes away a potential criticism later of this. I think we just don't know which nonprofits are out there that will be, if they're over $7 million in payroll, they'll have to fill out the paperwork, they'll have to fill this out, and it'll, it'll emerge over time that there'll be some nonprofits out there, maybe large arts organizations, for example, like Seattle Opera. We just don't know who's going to be brought into this at this point. And I just think it would be better to have a exemption for all nonprofits. And if we, we think, well, there aren't that many people who make $150,000 and over $7 million in a nonprofit, then why not pass the exemption? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. And to the extent that that was a request for additional data before Monday, I, I would add to that. I think that it would be helpful to know if entities like the National Hockey League, the National Basketball Association are examples of nonprofits that would potentially be exempt from this if this amendment were included. It sounds like we should go ahead and vote, but I think that that's a worthy conversation to ask those questions. And appreciate all the comments that were made. Again, I appreciate the spirit in which it was introduced specifically to healthcare, though. And that's hopefully the conversation we'll have in just a second here. But at this point, I'd like to call for a vote. Seeing no other comments. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Amendment Number Eight?
House?
Nay.
Council President Gonzalez?
No.
Herbold?
No.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
No.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sawant?
Nay.
Chair Mosqueta?
No.
Three in favor, six opposed.
Okay, with a vote of three to six, the motion fails and the amendment is not adopted. With that, let's move on to Items Number 14 and Seven. These are items that I think central staff would like to present together. And then we will have the chance to have the sponsors speak to them, given the overlapping nature of them. Dan, thank you very much. And when you finish your summary, perhaps we could do the effect statement as well if you get the chance. And you're on mute, Dan.
There, I'm having trouble finding the mute button.
No problem. Just speak up a little bit. For some reason, it's a little quiet on your end.
Okay, so I'm taking you back to the presentation, Slide Number Four. We have addressed Items, Amendments Numbers One, Five, and Eight in the upper third of your screen. We are about to get into the, the amendments that begin to be either ors. And the first, the first couple that I'm going to address together, as the chair just described, are Councilmember Mosqueta's Amendment Number 14 and Councilmember Peterson's Amendment Number Seven. I would bring up the effect statements for each of these, but I think you'll find they are not very descriptive. So instead, I'm going to do my best to just verbally compare the two if that would be helpful.
That, that works just great. Thank you, Dan.
Okay. So both of these amendments would provide an exemption to the tax for nonprofit healthcare entities. And that's what, and they are competing versions of how to define what that means. In Amendment 14, Councilmember Mosqueta's proposal, there would be a five-year deduction of payroll that is underneath a $400,000 level. So the, the, those who are remaining to have to pay for the tax would pay only for their employees earning more than $400,000. The definition of, of nonprofit healthcare entities who would be eligible for this deduction are those who are primarily, who are involved in primary healthcare and provide more than 50% of their services to Medicaid-eligible clients. Also, non, nonprofit life science research organizations would be eligible for the deduction. The deduction would last five years. I'm going to just quickly jump to a high-level overview of Councilmember Peterson's proposal. Councilmember Peterson's proposal would differ in the timeframe first. Councilmember Mosqueta's Number 14 would be a five-year deduction. Councilmember Peterson's would be a two-year exemption. The exemption would apply both to nonprofit healthcare entities, which are defined in a slightly different way, or I shouldn't say slightly, in a different way. It would also apply to all hospitals, whether they are nonprofit or for-profit. So I'm going to just highlight what the nonprofit healthcare entities category would be covered by the two-year exemption under Councilmember Peterson's Amendment Number Seven. Those are primary, primary medicine providers who, for whom, not 50% as in Councilmember Peter, Mosqueta's proposal, but 25% in Councilmember Peterson's proposal, who provide service to those who are either Medicaid-eligible or Medicare-eligible. The comparison to Councilmember Mosqueta's proposal is the addition of Medicare-eligible being part of the 25%. And that percent is also different in the two proposals. I apologize if that wasn't crystal clear, but that's, that's the flavor of the differences.
Very, very clear. Thank you very much, Dan. Appreciate it. Councilmember Peterson, anything to add before we do a conversation?
Thank you, Budget Chair. The, so Amendment Seven, which would be the two-year exemption for all healthcare, the rationale there is that during the COVID emergency, I don't think it makes sense to tax these, to impose this administrative financial burden on these institutions as they're providing healthcare relief, providing, helping people with COVID, et cetera, in the middle of the pandemic. So I just, that's why the two-year period is, is there is that it's presumably during the COVID period. I, I also support the intent of Councilmember Mosqueta's because it's, it's important for a longer period of time to exempt nonprofits. There are several nonprofit healthcare providers that would be exempted for the five-year period under Councilmember Mosqueta. So I'm not quite sure how to reconcile these two. So I'll, I'll defer to the chair for now.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. I think that Amendment 14 was an attempt to reconcile. And so if you'd still like to move your amendment for a possible vote in consideration, we can do that. I would suggest that we would do that first if you did want to vote on Amendment Seven. Before you consider doing that, I think Councilmember Lewis, did you have a question before we consider a motion to take one or two of these up?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to ask some clarifying questions about the overall impact this might have revenue-wise. Based on the last amendment we considered, the, the comprehensive total, Dan, I believe from your comments at that point, was it, you know, exempting all nonprofits would potentially be a $9 million hit? And, and I think I saw in that data set that that included all hospital providers. I just wanted to clarify that now that we're on to this. And do we have an idea on both of these, these amendments, both the Mosqueta and Peterson amendment, what the revenue impact would be? Or is there similarly a little bit of doubt, like there was in the nonprofit one? I just wanted to throw that back to you.
Yeah, it's a, a good question. I, I would answer it this way. We know that, that hospitals are... that hospitals are part of the category of nonprofits and hospitals. We have previously estimated that the nonprofits are likely the larger of the two, and we said $9.2 million for both categories when we were talking about nonprofits only. I am not able to break the $9.2 million, other than to say that's the upper cap of what it logically could be when we're only talking about hospitals and nonprofit hospitals as a subset of that.
Seeing other technical questions. Councilmember Peterson, I'm happy to go in the order that is on the slide here. If that is your preference, it's no problem. I think.
I don't want to drag this out. At the same time, I do feel that the two could be further reconciled. I mean, you could theoretically exempt for-profit hospitals for two years during COVID, and then the five-year measure for nonprofits would keep going. But if other folks disagree, maybe it does make sense to then vote on mine first.
Council President, or Madam Chair, may I chime in? I apologize for the interruption. Councilmember Juarez.
Go ahead, Councilmember Juarez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am struggling because, in trying to reconcile your amendment, Council Madam President, or Madam Chair, and Councilwoman Peterson, because they both get to what my concern were, in that I appreciate you, Councilwoman Mosqueta, on the five-year duration under $400,000 in exempting at 50% our Medicaid, but you don't include Medicare. And then on Councilmember Peterson's, I appreciate the two-year exception to both nonprofit and profit. And I'm wondering, I mean, it's a difficult choice, because I thought if we combined the two, it'd be a better piece of legislation, a better amendment, I'm sorry, to capture what we're trying to do here, because my concern is that we have some for-profit hospitals that may not fall under these and are providing services to low-income families that are doing Medicare and Medicaid. And one entity that comes in mind is the San Antonio Health Board. I don't know what the effect would be. I know they have employees that make over 150. And again, I think there's some wisdom into what Councilwoman Peterson is saying about a two-year exemption in the midst of this, in the midst of COVID. So if there's some way we can bridge that, otherwise I'm inclined to vote no on your amendment and vote yes on Councilmember Peterson's.
Thank you, Councilmember Juarez. I saw Councilmember Lewis's hand.
Yeah, and this is sort of a procedural question, because this is my first budget process here on the council. If we pass this bill today, since this is like a committee of the whole, do we still have to weigh in on it again at full council? And so would there be an opportunity to maybe reconcile these amendments? And I'd signal my interest in working with the sponsors of both amendments, because I kind of agree with Councilmember Juarez's statements that there's sort of parts from both of them that I like, and I think we could kind of reconcile it and put like sort of a comprehensive responsive to COVID amendment forward potentially later in the process, but anyways, a process question. I don't know if it's for Madam Chair or for Dan, but I'll just throwing that out there.
I will note that we are trying to not have central staff work over the three-day weekend here coming up, but appreciate your creative thinking. I am thinking at this point, we do vote on the amendments that are in front of us, and then if there are council members who are interested in ongoing discussions based on whatever does or doesn't pass today, we could, you know, always, there's the opportunity for that future conversation, but in terms of an opportunity to vote up or down on the amendments, we could potentially consider that day. I saw Dan's hand and then Councilmember Swant.
I was going to answer Councilmember Lewis's question. I think you addressed it, Madam Chair. Basically, this would be up for a vote before the full council when you next take it up. After it moves out of committee, it goes to full council. And as you said, that would be an opportunity to further amend whatever it is that comes out of committee. I think you'll need to pick, you need to pick one of these two, so we're not doing the sausage making on the fly here.
Yeah, I think that's right. Councilmember Swant, did you have anything else that you want to add before we consider?
I'm just concerned about the time, so I would really urge all councilmembers to keep that in mind.
Okay. Councilmember Peterson, did you want to work over the next few days on this question and see if there's additional room? We could pull both amendments at this point and keep working if that's the intent here?
Yes, I think that would be helpful.
Okay. I am happy to do that as well for the purposes of time here today, and also for the purposes of our discussion to keep having this conversation. It does sound like there's some concern on both ends, so we'll see what we can do, and to try to do that in a very quick fashion for central staff so that the time is not on them over the weekend. Okay, so at this point, I'm going to pull Amendment Fourteen, and Councilmember Peterson?
Sure. You're suggesting I'm pulling Amendment Seven as well?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Okay. Appreciate the discussion, folks. Dan Eater, let us move into the last section here.
Okay, sorry, I took it off. You cannot see the slideshow, is that correct? Can you now see the slideshow?
Now we can.
Okay, great. So this last section at the bottom of your screen is there are five amendments that have at least a common couple of subjects that are addressed. Amendments Three and Four address what is described as a sunset provision, which is to say, when does the tax end? Items Six, Twelve, and Eighteen address, have different approaches for how to amend what is described as the maintain a level playing field section. That section describes the council's intent to monitor other taxes that may be imposed by King County and the state of Washington in the future, and to take future actions to end or amend the payroll tax. These items are marked as being all in conflict with item, I'm sorry, Amendment Three, Councilmember Swant's amendment, because that amendment, unlike what is shown directly on this screen, it not only would strike the sunset clause, which would make the tax no longer end after 10 years, which is what's in the base legislation. If you strike that section, there would be no specific end date to the to the tax unless and until council takes a future action through a separate ordinance. But that Amendment Three also strikes, entirely strikes the maintain a level playing field provision that Amendments Six, Twelve, and Eighteen amend in different ways. Amendment Three is also in competition, or in conflict, if you will, with Amendment Four that Councilmember Peterson is sponsoring. Councilmember Peterson's sunset amendment would change the current 10-year proposal to a four-year sunset, so that the tax would cease to be in play after 2024. I think I'll pause here to see if you want to do any procedural steps that might that might allow us to talk only about the sunset provisions, and then potentially talk as a separate step only about the maintain a level playing field provisions.
Yes, council colleagues, I would like to take up the sunset provision question, and then the maintaining a level playing field provision. Councilmembers Swant and Peterson have sunset-related items. Councilmember Swant, you are listed first on the agenda. Would you like to speak to your amendment, and then Councilwoman Peterson?
Yes. This amendment, as was stated before, would eliminate the sunset clause. I think it almost seems strange to be arguing against a sunset clause, because who in their right mind, or in any honesty, can believe that, given how exacerbated the crisis is for ordinary people, and especially marginalized communities, that the crisis of housing, not to mention the after-effects of the pandemic, and the after-effects of the joblessness, will magically be solved by some arbitrary date? We have an entrenched inequality in our society, and that needs to be addressed, and that's why to say that a tax on big business, and in fact, the first-ever citywide tax on big business, because we have the nation's most regressive tax system, to say that this type of new tax, it would be historic if you passed this, only needs to be temporary, is disingenuous, and also just insulting to ordinary people who have been shouldering the burden of funding our society while big businesses like Amazon and other corporations have enjoyed a corporate tax haven for who knows how long. And so we believe that the only thing that should sunset is the economic inequality and the regressive taxation and the underfunding of our social needs.
Okay. And I will signal before Councilwoman Peterson, you speak, my intent, if we take this amendment up, would be to do an amendment to move that we amend Three, Amendment Three, by maintaining the language in the whereas section and maintaining the level playing field language, so that then we could come back and address the level playing field language. As you see, there's three amendments related to that. But that would, in effect, Councilmember Swant, we would just be amending the sunset language that is the item in your bill, so just want to put that in context. That would be my suggestion for Amendment Number Three. Councilmember Peterson, with that in mind, would you like to speak to your amendment very briefly as well, so we know the universe of how these proposals compare?
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. So the rationale for, I mean, I view the sunset as a renewal, a time to revisit, a time to renew, a time to recalibrate things. A lot of the tax measures we've talked about earlier today, they have sunsets on them, the property tax levies for the libraries, housing, education, transportation, et cetera, all have dates, and they're renewed and revisited. I think that that's a healthy process to go through that. I agree, there is a crisis now that needs to be addressed. So four years from now, I think that it can be discussed again. We can see where we are with COVID, with the recession, and then revisit it. Maybe the tax will go up in four years. We need to have that date in there to require that discussion for a new city council.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Peterson. Councilmember Swant, you are listed first on the agenda. Would you like to move Amendment Number Three?
Yes, I would like to move Amendment Number Three.
Wonderful. It's been moved, Amendment Number Three has been moved to Council Bill 119810. I will second that.
Can I just speak to it quickly?
Yes, please.
In relation to what you proposed as amendment to my amendment? I wanted to suggest, and I'm open to that, and I want to, I want, I really hope that the council will support the removing of the sunset clause, and so I welcome your support for this. Just as a suggestion, as an alternative to what you were suggesting, maybe we could put your amendment, your language for the level playing field as presented in Amendment Number Twelve, instead of combine that with my amendment to strike the sunset language and do that as one amendment. I don't want to make it too complicated, but just that's one idea. We could do it that way, and then have that be amended version of my amendment to be voted on.
For the process of simplicity, I'm looking at Dan just to see his feedback on that. I think that your comments are in line with my hope, which would be if we eliminate the sunset language, we then take up the maintenance of the level playing field. But because we have two other council members that have also offered language around maintaining the level playing field, I just want to make sure that we're giving folks the chance to speak to those as well when we get there. So Councilmember Swant, I think the effect of what I'm going to propose to your amendment would, in essence, do exactly what you just said if my amendment were to be taken up on maintaining the level playing field. So at this first step would be a two-step process. This first step would be to to just strike the sunset, and that would be the effect of the amendment that I'm suggesting.
Yes.
Okay. So I appreciate where you were going with that, and trying to put two into one, but I think let's go ahead for the process of simplicity. And, Council colleagues, I would like to amend Amendment Number Three. I move to amend Amendment Three by maintaining the language in the whereas section and in Section 5.38.100 to maintain the level playing field.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. The effect of that would be to maintain the language in Councilmember Swant's proposal in Amendment Number Three that strikes the sunset section. As you see in Councilmember Swant's proposal, the sunset language is Section 5.38.120. Dan, do you mind just putting that section on the screen so folks can see that? The effect of this is just making this amendment strike the sunset. Are there any other comments? Hearing none. Oh, Councilmember Peterson, did you have something?
Well, so, yes, Chair, so we are going to talk about the maintaining the level playing field later, because I actually very much like Councilmember Morales's version of that, so
Exactly.
Maybe willing to withdraw my version or Councilmember Morales's version?
Exactly. We will talk about the maintaining the level playing field amendments in just a moment, so this would, in effect, keep that language there, so then we could debate it and vote on that amended language in a moment here. So as Dan's showing you, the effect of the amendment that I am making to Councilmember Swant's amendment is to strike this last section, please scroll down, Dan, would be to just have that section struck, which is 5.38.120, the sunset section.
And just clarified, it would actually, it's eliminating the sunset clause, just to be.
Thank you. Yeah, sunset clause, appreciate that. Any additional comments? Seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the Amendment to Amendment Three?
Strauss?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Herbold?
Aye.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Aye.
Morales?
Aye.
Peterson?
No.
Swant?
Aye.
Chair Mosqueta?
Aye.
Eight in favor, one opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Just for clarification, do we now need to vote on Amendment Three as amended?
Correct. Amendment Three is as amended before you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you please, Councilmember Strauss, comment?
Thank you, Budget Chair Mosqueta. I am going to be voting against both sunset amendments today, because we are not voting for the level playing field amendments first, and so if we need to come back and have further discussion at a later date, or later in this meeting, I'm happy to do so. The level playing field is the condition for me on whether or not these sunsets provisions are in play. Just wanted to explain my rationale before I vote. Thank you.
Very, very important. I am in the same vote in terms of concerns and considered ordering them in that way, but I will be voting yes on amended version, amended Amendment Number Three, with the intent to immediately take up the level playing field discussion, so getting to that in just a moment, but I understand where you're coming from. Any additional comments? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on amended Amendment Number Three?
Strauss?
Nay.
Council President Gonzalez?
Abstain.
Herbold?
Aye.
Juarez? Juarez?
No.
Lewis?
Abstain.
Morales?
Aye.
Peterson?
No.
Swant?
Aye.
Chair Mosqueta?
Aye. Madam Clerk, before you call the roll, just want to double check. We, I think before the roll is called, we have the opportunity to reconsider votes. Is there anybody who would like to reconsider their vote to strike the language here that eliminates the sunset, knowing that we will take up the maintaining the level playing field language in just a moment? Okay.
Chair Mosqueta?
Yes, Madam President.
Are you concerned about the impact of the abstentions?
Yes, I am.
Madam Clerk, can you please remind us about the rules related to abstentions and their effect on the final roll call?
This is Amelia. The effect of an abstention is that it's not counted as the yes or the no. The results of the emotion still requires a majority of councilmembers who voted.
Okay, so Madam Clerk, thank you so much. And therefore, the number of councilmembers that voted is seven, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? I mean, not call the roll, tell us what the roll call was.
The tally.
Yeah.
Four in favor, three opposed, two abstained.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Madam President. The amendment is adopted with a vote of four to three. Councilmember Peterson, you still have your amendment out there. Would you like to consider that? Or given that we have just moved to strike that amendment, Dan, I'm also, sorry, strike that section, I'm wondering how that affects Councilmember Peterson's proposed amendment here.
I think we can, I'd like to move it and just have a quick vote. We don't need to debate it, probably.
Okay.
So, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Just wanted to make sure that it made sense to vote on something that has been struck, but hearing no concerns. I.
Thank you.
Yeah, Council President.
I guess the initial question that you asked, Chair Mosqueta, was to have Council Central Staff tell us what the effect of, or whether this Peterson amendment is still relevant or what the effect of it would be. I was, personally, I would be interested in hearing a response to that question from Council Central Staff before Councilmember Peterson makes his formal motion. So if there's no objection to, at a minimum, getting a response to that particular question posed by the chair, I would urge us to get that response so that we have an understanding of of whether a motion needs to be made or not.
Thank you, Council President.
This is Dan Eater. I would certainly defer to the committee to make the determination about whether this is still, Amendment Four is still worthy of a vote. Having just passed an amendment that strikes the underlying legislation that Amendment Four would alter, I guess my opinion is that it wouldn't be necessary to, through a vote, consider Amendment Four. But if the sponsor wants to do so and the chair and the other members are willing to do so, I certainly have no objection.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilwoman Peterson.
So based on that guidance from Central Staff, and thank you to the Council President for getting us an answer to that. So based on that clarification that the sunset clause has been, by a majority of voting members, been eliminated by this committee, it, therefore, it would indicate that I would not have the votes for Amendment Number Four. Therefore, I will, even though I support reducing the sunset period, I will withdraw Amendment Four because it does not have the votes.
Appreciate your leadership on that. Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Council colleagues, let's move on to the last set of amendment items here, as promised. We have the maintaining the level playing field language in front of us. There's three amendments, Councilmember Peterson, Councilmember Strauss and I, and Councilmember Morales. Council Central Staff, could you please walk us through the three amendments that are in front of us?
I'll happily do that. I want to give a high-level overview of the differences between Amendments Six, Twelve, and Eighteen. And then if any councilmembers want to look at the actual language, I'll be glad to pull that up. But I'll have to do it one at a time. I can't give you all three at once. Amendments Six and Twelve would articulate the council's intent to monitor the future taxing authority that may be imposed by King County or the state of Washington. And it states that each of these state in different ways the council's intent to take a future action to either end or amend the city's payroll tax that would be enacted by the underlying legislation. Amendment Eighteen is a hard end date that would stop the tax upon receipt of a report from the director of the city's Finance and Administrative Services Department that indicates that either, that King County and/or the state have enacted certain kinds of payroll taxes that are for similar purposes to the one that is in the underlying legislation. Whereas the slide on your screen shows that Councilmember Morales's hard end amendment number eighteen is in conflict with Amendments Six by Councilmember Peterson and Twelve by Councilmembers Mosqueta and Strauss. It is, it's been brought to my attention that it is possible for Councilmember Morales's Amendment Eighteen to be additive to either Amendment Six or Amendment Twelve. So that is just something that the committee will have to decide about whether they are or not, or in conflict. You could do both Six and Eighteen or Twelve and Eighteen. You cannot do both Six and Twelve. Unless there are questions about the particular language, I would leave it to the sponsors to speak to their amendments.
Okay, thank you very much. And this is our last section of amendments. I have been chatting with folks from IT system and from our central staff. And we are going to try to get through this last section, and then I'll make an announcement about the start time for the next committee meeting here in just a second. Councilmember Morales and Councilmember Peterson. Councilmember Strauss and I have some amendment language as well. I will take the order in which it's presented in the agenda here. If you'd like to speak to your amendments, then Councilmember Peterson, I'm sorry, Councilmember Strauss and I will speak, and then Councilmember Morales. Councilmember Peterson, please go ahead.
Thank you. I'm pleased to see so much interest in, first of all, thank you, Chair Mosqueta, for putting this language in the original jumpstart tax legislation. I'm glad to see there was some unity of trying to tighten the language up a bit as we thought through what might actually happen here. And we look forward to the state government and the county government acting, making progress on progressive revenue and then what we would do about it. I actually very much prefer Councilmember Morales's amendment. So I am, if we're going to proceed with her amendment, I'm happy to drop mine. And I understand from Central Staff, it could be additive as well. So I will just see where the conversation goes with Councilmember Morales talking about her measure. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Strauss, would you like to speak to our shared amendment? And just so you know, there you go.
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. This is one of the most important amendments in this entire bill, in my opinion. And it is because we need to make sure that businesses do have a level playing field across our region, across our county, and across our state. Now, I have heard from both people running in the district that I represent for the State House express an interest in a similar tax proposal at a state level. I've heard many legislators already express their interest in having a similar tax proposal at the state level. And if they are going to go back this next legislative session and pass a similar tax, fulfill their own gaps, we will lose out. What is most important about this proposal, this amendment here, is that it does allow and sets up for regional solutions. We have King County Regional Authority on Homelessness that is coming online in just a few months. And we had a regional tax proposal that was at the state legislature this last year that had wide support. It's still confusing to me why it did not get across the final finish line. And so the reason that this amendment, as compared to the other amendments, put forward to secure the level playing field is important is because it calls out three things. And Chair, if I may just read from the legislation.
Please do.
It sets up and puts in plain language that the council intends to monitor proposals from the county or state to ensure that A, businesses in its jurisdiction are not subject to additional payroll taxes; B, filings are consolidated and streamlined to reduce administrative burden; and C, that the funding source is maintained for the items as described in our bill. Now, the reason that this is important to me is because we, especially when we're talking about the regional solutions here. It is important to me because we know that we have a housing deficit in our county. And so this amendment, and the way that this amendment is crafted, allows us to ensure that the city or county has a proportional revenue if the state passes it. And it ensures that if the county is going to pass the same bill, that the items that we are addressing in our legislation here around housing and homelessness are in fact included in the ways that we're here describing. And so that is why it is, I find that, and thank you, Dan Eater, for your additional analysis about whether these amendments can be combined. I would say that I think that this amendment should stand alone. And this is, just again, very important because we don't want to have taxpayers paying taxes more than once. And we want to make sure that their programs are streamlined so that it is predictable. And we want to make sure that Seattle is getting a proportional amount of revenue if another level of government decides to go along with the same thinking that we are leading with here in the city of Seattle. Thank you, Chair, for the opportunity to speak, and I'm sure that you have thoughts to share as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Strauss. I'll just briefly chime in. I think that this amendment recognizes that we are part of a larger effort at the state and the county, and that the partners that we've been working with on this legislation have been trying to get additional progressive revenue, both at the county and the state level. We are trying to be good partners here in Seattle. We are stepping up in a moment of crisis to provide immediate relief and in the out years to build the affordable housing and provide the services that have been long put on the back burner. We know that this is the case from city studies and local studies in our region. We need to be part of the solution, and we are trying to act with urgency right now. We are acting with urgency to take care of Seattle residents. And we also know that as our state and region continues to see the inequity caused by our upside-down tax system, that this is one responsible way to step forward and address that need for additional revenue. And the amendment in front of us recognizes that we're stepping up and filling this gap in the moment, and we're also providing predictability. We want to show that if there is additional efforts to try to address the regressive tax system that we have, that there's ongoing predictability for our partners in this area to ensure that there is the ability to continue to make responsible decisions in the future. You know, I'm really excited about the language that we have in front of us. I think it provides that predictability for entities in the Seattle region, and it provides that immediate relief that we know we need. We have gotten rid of the sunset, in effect, by the last vote that we took. And we also want to recognize that predictability means making sure that there's additional revenue that is commensurate with the needs that we're outlining in the proposal in front of us, and that it's going into the programs that we so deeply care about that we will be voting on in the spend plan. And with that, I think it provides assurances, it's a responsible way to step forward, and it provides the predictability our community needs. Councilmember Swant, before I go to you, I want to give the last sponsor of the amendment on this section a chance to talk about her piece, and then we will have the legislation in front of us for us to do a discussion and vote. Councilmember Morales.
Thank you. I appreciate this opportunity to pick through what each of these does. I did not see this amendment until this morning, so I'm still trying to understand how they're different. I thought it was going to be slightly different yesterday. So as I understand, this, the Strauss and Mosqueta amendment is focusing on or including preservation of the spending if additional revenue comes in from other jurisdictions. The amendment that I have had drafted would only sunset the payroll tax a year after imposition by the county or state level. And only if the new form of corporate tax would generate an equivalent amount of city taxes, of revenue for the city. And I think, you know, the important piece is that the city would not lose out if something else happens. I also want to make sure that this is a progressive tax that we're talking about, so it's not, you know, an additional property tax that would trigger sunset clause. So, or, you know, the elimination of the tax. So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding how, Dan, you had mentioned that these two might be additive. So I'd like to have a little bit understanding of what that looks like for you. And so maybe I'll stop there, and then I might have another comment after that.
Dan, technical clarification on that before we get into discussion?
Yeah, I think it's open for councilmembers to decide whether the intent was to add the hard stop language in Amendment Eighteen to anything that passes. The Amendment Eighteen doesn't strike out anything else in Section 538100. It just adds some language. So it could add it to either an unchanged base, or it could add that language to a changed base, the changes being provided in the Amendment Twelve or, I believe, the now-withdrawn Amendment Six.
That, yeah, so that's helpful. You know, my real preference, honestly, was to delete the sunset clause altogether. So I'm glad to see that we did that. And it was not my intent to make this a hard stop, but merely to say that we wanted to ensure that any additional, that any additional tax from another jurisdiction protected revenue for the city. So I am wondering if my concerns have been met by Councilmember Swant's amendment.
I believe so, Councilmember Morales. And I see Councilmember Swant nodding. Okay. So with that, that's an outline of the pieces in front of us. Councilmember Peterson, I do think that your amendment is listed first. I have attempted to go in order. If you are still interested in putting forward your amendment, we could entertain that. I'm hoping that you see elements of the sunset with strengthening the tie-in to county and state partners reflected in the Strauss-Mosqueta amendment and would entertain a vote if you're interested, but also entertain if you're pulling your amendment.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm willing to pull Amendment, my Amendment Six. If I better understand your Amendment Twelve, I'm trying to figure out where is the language in Amendment Twelve that says if the state or county pass a corporate tax equivalent amounts, that we would adjust our tax locally?
Okay, I'm going to turn it to Councilmember Strauss and perhaps for the, yes, go ahead, Councilmember Strauss.
Thank you. And this would be under Section A stating businesses in the jurisdiction are not subject to additional payroll taxes. So, this meaning that there's only going to be one bite out of a payroll tax measure.
Councilmember Peterson, I think that what I'm going to do, because we're getting very close to 2:00 PM, and I want us to be able to get an announcement out there. I am going to suggest that we move Amendment, Amendment number?
12.
12.
12.
I'm moving Amendment Number 12 for the purposes of discussion. It's been moved? Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. It's been moved and seconded. And council colleagues, that allows us to get into the debate on this amendment. Before we do that, I want to make an announcement for folks who are interested in joining us for the Session 2. I would like us to get through this discussion and to potentially a vote on the bills in front of us. So, if there's no objection, the agenda will be amended to change the start time of Session 2 to 3:00 PM, which would allow us to get through these questions and the remainder of Session 1 agendas and allow for a mini-break. Hearing no objection, the agenda is amended to modify Session 2's start time at 3:00 PM. The modified Session 2 start time will allow committee to recess, and then we will proceed with the business items on the agenda, including public comment at the very beginning. So, Central Staff, Dan Eater, would you like to comment on anything, any additional questions that you've heard regarding the amendment in front of us? I don't see.
No, Madam Chair, I don't have any questions that I noted that were outstanding. If folks want to remind me, I'll be happy to address any.
Okay, great. So, again, council colleagues, I think that the language that's been crafted in front of you has also been discussed with a number of stakeholders who are interested in the same concepts that Councilmember Strauss has just outlined. And I'm feeling pretty confident that this allows for us to, now that the sunset has been removed, have a stronger emphasis on what it looks like to have our spend plan invested in and also be really good partners as we think about what the regional and state efforts are. Councilmember Peterson, I saw your hand. And Councilmember Swant, I saw that. Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Chair. So, Amendment 12, the Strauss-Mosqueta version of maintaining a level playing field, subsection A. This question is for Central Staff. So, businesses in its jurisdiction are not subject to additional payroll taxes under Chapter 5.3. Does that, is that saying that if this is adopted, this tax measure to, in the next week or so, that if the state passes something, we would reduce the payroll taxes that we're passing now? Or that we simply would not add more to those?
My understanding of the language here is that it is an intent statement that announces what this council today intends to do in the event that they observe that there are payroll taxes imposed by other jurisdictions that would affect the same tax base as the underlying legislation here. What you actually are committed to do is up to a future council. So, when you learn tomorrow or next year or 10 years from now that King County or the state of Washington has imposed a payroll tax, it will be up to a future council to determine what to do about it. This is an intent statement that describes what this council, right now, intends to do in such a circumstance.
Councilmember Swant, I saw your hand.
Yes. So, just very quickly, I know that we're considering Amendment 12, but I just, the whole, all the three amendments that were under consideration, and I hope Councilmember Morales has withdrawn hers, or, you know, depending on, or maybe it'll depend on what vote we have on this one. But I just wanted to have overall comments on all these amendments that have been labeled as level playing field amendments. I just, while I do intend to support 12, and I will explain why, I do find it quite problematic that all these amendments have been called level playing field amendments because there is nothing like a level playing field for working people right now. Poor people pay six times as much as the wealthiest in Washington State. So, I find it a bit Orwellian that this term has been used. I mean, have the taxes of the poor and working people been reduced to create a level playing field? No, I think that this section has been misnamed. And, but, you know, but I don't want to dwell on that. I just want to register that point in the interest of the people who are watching this. And I just want to say, we do not object, my office does not object to monitoring, to remove administrative burdens. But I also think it's important to point out that when working people not only are shouldering the overwhelming burden of taxation, but they pay city, county, state taxes. I don't see why it's so unthinkable for big business to have to pay taxes to both the city and the state or the county. And I don't think any of these amendments are necessary. But I think Number 12 is the least problematic, in my view. So, I will be voting yes on it, and I appreciate Dan clarifying that this is an intent and not a binding question for future councils. And I really hope that there will be working people mobilizing and organizing to prevent the overturning of what I hope we're going to be doing today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Swant. And I think your point is appreciated. Also, trying to continue to, it's really about predictability, so maybe that would have been a better title. Thank you for the comments there. Any additional comments here? Councilmember Morales, any additional comments from you? I'm sorry, I thought I saw your hand earlier. Okay, no additional comments. Okay, hearing no additional comments, Councilmember Strauss, any final comments from you?
No, thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Amendment Number 12? Strauss?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Herbold?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Morales?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Swant?
Aye.
Chair Mosqueta?
Aye.
Nine in favor and none opposed. Thank you, council colleagues. Really appreciate all of your work on these amendments. I just agree with the amendments on the bill in front of us. Before we move to final adoption, are there any additional comments that folks would like to make on the revenue proposal in front of us? Councilmember Morales?
Is this our final say about this bill? Just clarifying our process here.
Yes. We have the bill, oh, sorry, go ahead, please, Amelia.
It's Councilwoman Juarez, I'm sorry. I was following, I was agreeing with Councilmember Morales. Is this the time to make a quick statement, or?
This, according to my script, we have amended the underlying bill. So, all of the bills have been amended. Councilmember Morales, we did have your one amendment left over. I'm sorry, I thought I heard you maybe say that you pulled it, but I'm seeing you nod, so I don't want to skip over that.
If I didn't before, I'll say now that I pulled.
Okay, I appreciate that. And we do have the underlying bill in front of us. So, this is the chance to make additional further comments to the bill as amended.
Okay. Shall I proceed, then?
Yes, please.
Okay. Good grief. Okay, thank you, everybody. So, I do want to say, before I begin with comments about this bill, that we started the morning in a way that I don't think any of us expected. And so, I want to strongly condemn the actions taken by our mayor this morning. Peaceful protesters exercising their First Amendment right to protest police brutality have once again been met with police in riot gear. The CHOP is a protest. It has always been a protest. It is people protesting the East Precinct, which is itself a symbol of the police brutality that must end. And what must also end is the mayor's purposeful campaign to misinform the public about threats to safety and to censor those who disagree with her. I think, you know, folks are calling on our city to release protesters who are demonstrating their resistance to continued police brutality, and I think we should support them by meeting that demand. Okay, progressive revenue. Here we are. This is one of the most important vehicles we have for creating permanent investment in our community. You all know my personal investment in this process has been to find a permanent source of funding for the Equitable Development Initiative. That is an important tool for investing in Black and Brown communities. And as we know, there has never been a greater need for that right now or a more opportune time to invest in Black and Brown communities for people who have repeatedly been harmed by our city. I want to thank organizations in District 2 who have been advocating for the kind of investments that will serve our Black and Brown neighbors. They have reminded me at every turn in this process that if Black lives truly matter, we must be sure it's more than a sentiment and that our actions reflect our priorities. I want to thank Got Green, Interim CDA, Puget Sound Sage, El Centro, Rainier Beach Action Coalition, many others who have underscored their priorities and their time, shared their time with us to ensure that our community is reflected in this proposal. This begins to address the history of underinvesting in Black and Brown neighborhoods by shifting the burden to wealthiest corporations in the city, supporting the EDI to build community wealth, supporting Green New Deal to invest in a just transition away from fossil fuel, increasing the revenue from the original proposal. These are huge wins for our community. And I want to thank advocates and partners, again, for helping us get here. I also want to thank my staff for bringing their lived experience to my office and to their work for the city. Lakeisha Farmer, Alexis Turla, Darzel Touch, and Devin Silvernail have been organizing in our district to ensure that our community's voices are heard in this process. This is a historic victory for the people of Seattle. They care deeply, as do I, about creating a more compassionate city. And today, we've showed them that local government can deliver. We've rejected cynical attempts by outside forces to maintain the status quo, a status quo that protects power brokers at the expense of the little guy. And to quote one of my favorite performers and artists, Lauryn Hill, "It's time to shift the focus from the richest to the brokest. It's time to build community wealth, repair the harms done by our racist history." Seattle is asking for and has insisted on dramatic change in how our city functions. And the people in our city have shown that they have the power to make it happen. I am eager to vote for this and look forward to celebrating when it's done. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I have Councilmember Juarez next, and then Councilmember Swant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not going to go through what I pretty much talked about this morning. I'm just going to make a few points. Again, I do support a progressive tax. I do support a tax on corporations. I'm still a supporter of a countywide or a statewide approach to address our regressive tax system. But today, unfortunately, I can't support today's action, attacks from Seattle City Council, again. I believe it should go to the voters. Our city is facing a pandemic, an economic recession, and civil unrest due to racism at the same time, which I've been lovingly called this trifecta. One of those conditions enough would cause me, to give me more pause. So, to address these needs, I believe government needs to be active, involved, to help fund solutions. During a pandemic, we don't need to tax hospitals, medical clinics, private medical suppliers, and contractors. Our medical institutions are essential governmental services that are already suffering economically. UW Medicine, which runs Harborview Hospital, as I shared this morning, a multi-state trauma center, has furloughed 5,500 workers. We also, I believe, don't need to tax other essential services or governmental functions, such as legal aid services for low-income or suppliers and contractors of organizations like Food Lifeline, providing food for those who need it most. Grocery stores may be exempted, but their suppliers are not. During an economic recession, we need to create and protect job growth, not tax them. The Boeing Company has already laid off, is laying off, 10,000 workers in Washington State. Alaska Airlines is laying off 3,000 workers. Construction is hampered by the presidential administration's fight with China and the EU, and supply chains are choking. And we are feeling this nationally, locally, regionally, and certainly in the city of Seattle. This, in addition to the hundreds of local small businesses that are shuttered, stopped in their tracks, all workers, all these workers are laid off. Our current unemployment rate is over 16%. As I shared earlier, in 2009, CL City Council lifted the quote-unquote "tax on jobs," the payroll tax, because of the 2008 recession. We passed a quote-unquote "head tax," and we repealed it because we found ourselves in a recession. Seattle needed job growth, and that's what that council did. Right now, today, we need job growth. Therefore, and again, Councilmember, our Chair Mosqueta, thank you so much and your staff for working with our office and answering our questions. Thank you to the business community that contacted me, the nonprofits, the tribes, the health centers and clinics that had concerns, the supply chain folks, labor, I could go on and on. And again, I do want to say a special thank you also to Councilmember Swant, who's been hard at this for years, and I appreciate that her and I are able to discuss some of these issues and agree to disagree. But at the end of the day, I trust the voters of the city of Seattle to tax corporations. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Juarez. Councilmember Swant?
I'm sorry, could you come back to me in a little bit of a rotation so I can have a few more minutes?
Are there any other folks who would like to make some comments? Okay, Councilmember Swant, I'm not seeing, Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Mosqueta, and to your staff for putting together the jumpstart proposal, and to our central staff for working so hard on it and trying to reconcile all these amendments. I'm glad we were able to talk about all these amendments today. I think it's really important to have this public discourse, even if we don't agree on everything. It's important for the public to hear us considering various options and different parameters. I feel that some of my, I was disappointed that some of my amendments did not pass. I felt some of them were, I felt they were all reasonable, and I think we should exempt nonprofits. I think we should put it to the voters to decide such a large tax. Also, we don't have the spending plan yet. I realize the rationale for talking about that next. However, because this is just the committee vote today, I'll be voting no today, but I'll be reserving my right to change my vote later if we take a look at the spending plan. But I, you know, big picture is that I support progressive taxation. I'm very disappointed that we don't have it from the state. I'm disappointed that we didn't get the regional measure, House Bill 2907 passed. So, I'm just, want to thank everybody for today, but I'm going to vote no today, and then we'll talk about it some more as we take it to the full council and have a spending plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Any additional comments? Seeing none, Councilmember Swant?
I want to start by condemning the attacks by Mayor Durkin and the Seattle Police that served under her direction against the Capitol Hill organized protest. And she chose the day that she knew the city council would be completely engrossed in discussing and debating and voting on the Amazon tax today. And she chose this day to attack the CHOP. I don't think that was a coincidence. We're hearing reports that she, the police under her direction have used pepper spray and rubber bullets while clearing the CHOP. This is just absolutely stunning and completely unacceptable. I'm just, I'm not surprised by what the establishment and by what Mayor Durkin ever do, but I am aghast that they would do this in the midst of this uprising in the context of us having just, the council of just having voted on a ban on chemical weapons. And given that there was a temporary order banning the use of tear gas. So, it's really just stunning to me that she would do this. There have been, according to reports, there have been 31 people arrested, 31 activists arrested. The Seattle Police are demanding that the media leave. One of the on-the-ground reporters, Omari Salisbury, has posted about how they are threatening to arrest him for continuing to livestream. I wanted to convey my solidarity from my office to the work that Omari has done and say that I absolutely oppose, and Socialist Alternative absolutely opposes any cracking down on media's ability to report what is happening there. And... any cracking down on media's ability to report what is happening there. And I wanted to reiterate something that I've said many times in person and through our social media and our email newsletters, that all the protesters that have been arrested, not only today, but throughout this movement, be arrested without charges. I have to say, just this past Saturday, one of the main leaders of the CHOP movement, Keel Sean Turner, who's a young Black woman from the LGBTQ community and a member of Laborers 242, was arrested on Friday on what seemed very clearly like trumped-up charges just for being, just for spending time browsing at a T-Mobile store in Seattle and was harassed by an armed private security, and then the police arrested her. Many of us were at the King County Superior Court at her bail hearing, and it was thanks to our movement's solidarity that the judge was compelled to release her on her own recognizance, even though the prosecutor made a completely unreasonable and punitive request, or demand that the bail be for $10,000. This was just one of the countless examples of how communities of color and those who are actively and courageously fighting in protest movements are targeted by the criminal justice system. And I wanted to congratulate everybody in the CHOP community and in the movement who has fought so far. Occupation is a very effective tactic as part of movement building, and we are facing major repression, so we need to come together as a movement to figure out how we are going to go forward and win our demands, release all protesters without charges, defunding the Seattle Police, and many other demands. And I have to say, one of the demands that has come from the Charlie LaLyles family and many others, in fact, forty-five thousand Seattleites have signed this petition demanding that Mayor Durkin resign. And I think it's really, she continues to show that she is incapable of leading this city. All these attacks are on, are attacks on the Black Lives Matter movement. I had to say this because this is happening at this moment, and it would be incorrect to not speak. Now I want to speak to the legislation that we are about to pass, I hope. Today's vote to pass an Amazon tax in Seattle will be a historic victory, absolutely historic victory for working people. This victory will be hard-fought and it will be hard-won. The only reason an Amazon tax will be passed today in this budget committee is because of the strength of our movement, a movement that would not give up, a movement that did not relent when Bezos bullied City Council in 2018, leading to the shameful repeal of that Amazon tax by the majority of the council. A movement that did not back down when Bezos attempted a hostile takeover of City Council last year and handed him a massive defeat. A movement that organized itself through a series of grassroots democratic action conferences where hundreds of people, in fact, thousands by now, discussed and debated and voted on our strategy. A movement that did not relent when corporate Democrats in the state legislature attempted to create a ban on big business taxes in cities to block our movement. A movement that did not relent when the corporate media went an all-out assault against our tax Amazon movement, and not just in Seattle. No less than the Wall Street Journal editorial board, which is the bastion of the American capitalist class, wrote two opinion editorials attacking Seattle's tax Amazon movement. We did not slow down when the pandemic and the recession hit in full force and made face-to-face activity almost impossible for many weeks. And the recession left so many of us jobless or without enough hours. We did not stop when we faced unfounded delays on the city council. We are here today because of the solidarity and determination of working people to smash all obstacles that stood in our way, because that is what our class, the working class, is made of. This victory had nothing to do with third doors or one tables or other meaningless artifices of big business to distract from what took place these past months, an all-out fight between the billionaire class and the Seattle's working people. This victory had everything to do with the huge sacrifices of thousands of people of their time and energy over these past months and indeed years in this fight to begin to end Seattle's corporate tax haven and make big business pay not working people. It had everything to do with the Black Lives Matter rebellion, which broke out in Minneapolis and then spread around the country. The legitimacy of the status quo has been utterly smashed by the nationwide protest movement, the pandemic, and the deepening crisis of capitalism. In Seattle, tax Amazon was widely taken up at the Justice for George Floyd protests with more than twenty thousand protesters signing in twenty days, just twenty days, to support tax Amazon. And tax Amazon volunteers, without paid signature gatherers, have now gathered a total of twenty-seven thousand signatures in just one month to put a $300 million Amazon tax on the ballot, proving massive public support. This victory had everything to do with working-class solidarity against racism, against oppression, and against economic injustice. It is because of the unity of workers, the oppressed, the labor organizations, progressive community organizations, and socialist organizations in this fight because of our powerful multiracial movement. We, of course, did not win everything we wanted. The Amazon tax as it stands, and the final vote is not until Monday, is not up to, not commensurate with the scale of the crisis and not the $500 million that our movement originally proposed through our legislation. Does not include the $293 million we fought for to reverse the attacks, the coming attacks against social services and the mandatory furloughs and job losses that City of Seattle employees will be facing. But we defeated the sunset clause, and we quadrupled the revenues compared to the Amazon tax that we had won in 2018. We should be clear, what needs a sunset in this city is not this modest business tax or additional taxes that can be won on big business. What needs a sunset is racist policing, the nation's most regressive tax system, the mayor's vicious homeless sweeps, we need to stop the sweeps, and the bankrupt administration of Mayor Jenny Durkin herself, and the brutal reign of capital over working people, people of color, and the poor here and globally. While I disagree with some of the council members on their demands, on their amendments, and there are no votes on some of the strengthening amendments that our movement brought forward, I want to acknowledge their support and votes for the passage of this Amazon tax. Thank you, City Council, for what I think we are going to, we're about to be doing. Thank you, Councilmember Mosqueta and Councilmember Morales. I appreciate that we were able to put forward proposals together. I also cannot help but notice the huge irony of council members who say that we should not pass the Amazon tax, but put it on the ballot instead. Where was this alleged democratic spirit from the then-city council, the council members who voted for the repeal, of letting the voters decide? That is exactly what we were saying when we voted against the repeal, was letting the voters decide. Why did the majority of the council vote to repeal then? Thankfully, the majority of the council is going to be voting today against any attempt of that kind, and that's why I appreciate what we have done so far, and I look forward to the vote. I also, though, strongly disagree with comments that this legislation is somehow fundamentally different than the 2018 proposal. The difference is not in the weeds of the bills, it is in the strength of our tax Amazon movement this year, which of course is clearly providing that kind of pressure that is clear to all the elected officials. We should be clear that the movement is the only thing that made this victory possible with all working people and progressive unions and community organizations coming together to fight tooth and nail and forcing the city council to act. And the additional forty million that was won today, while that was less than we proposed, is still a victory entirely due to the pressure of our movement, but especially those in the movement who advocated for the Green New Deal and the Thousand Central District Homes. And we will continue fighting for more revenues. As I've seen again and again since I was elected in 2013, what is won or not won on the city council is, and in the halls of Congress, is based entirely on the strength of our movements, on the balance of power between the working class and the ruling class. Our tax Amazon movement is, has been now, right now, strong enough to defeat Bezos, Jeff Bezos, but not strong enough to stop all the corporate loopholes. And so we have to recognize that this is a historic victory and that we, we will, we on the ground will do everything we can to spread our movement. Our rallying cry everywhere must be "no to austerity, no to budget cuts under this pandemic and recession, tax big businesses in every city, not working people." We must build on this rebellion against the ruling class, as we did with the $15 minimum wage and renters' rights victories that we have won, to make it a national and global fight. Jeff Bezos, our movement is coming for you, for you and your billionaire cronies here and everywhere. In this struggle, we were clear-eyed about naming the real power pulling the strings in Seattle, Amazon and the billionaire class. Many argued that we should not, quote-unquote, antagonize big business and instead try to broker a deal, but we know that our power comes from the self-organization of the working class, not from negotiation with the elite. If you're listening to this from another city, don't let anyone tell you that in your fight to tax big business that you're being divisive, because class struggle is what gets the goods. But let's build on the momentum, and in Seattle, we have to immediately pivot to the fight to defund Seattle Police by at least fifty percent, demanding and winning the demand to release all protesters without any charges. We have to fight against the budget cuts to make sure that we fight to win the "stop the sweeps" amendment that we have been fighting for. But let's try and win it this year in the context of the movement. And we need an independent elected community oversight board to provide actual democratic oversight to root out police brutality. Of course, it is not just about Bezos or Amazon, it is not just about the police, and it is not just about progressive revenues. To create a just society, not just in Seattle, not only Washington, not just nationally, but globally, this is, this has to be our fight, because capitalism is completely incapable of meeting the most basic needs of working people. It's completely incapable of avoiding climate catastrophe. We need to take the big public, private development corporations and banks into democratic public ownership run by workers and provide affordable housing for all. We need to do the same with big energy corporations to enact a real Green New Deal and beyond. We will need to take the top five hundred corporations into public ownership, and we won't be done with that until we get to that point. So let's remain vigilant, let's remain, remain fighting until through Monday, let's make sure that this vote goes to the city council with no further weakening amendments. And I appreciate everybody who's been fighting in this fight. Let's carry on to dismantle this deeply oppressive racist sexist and utterly bankrupt system of capitalism, this police state, because capitalism is a police state and the whole system is rotten. Let's build a socialist world based on solidarity, genuine democracy, and equality. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawant. Are there any additional comments from colleagues?
Councilcolleagues, thank you so much. Are there any additional comments? Okay, I had a fire alarm going off in our house, so I am outside, so you didn't hear that noise. Everybody's safe. Just for the purposes of the viewing public, for folks who wanted to chime in to publicly speak, you will still have the chance to do so. We announced that there was a change in our agenda to start at 3:00 PM, so that will happen. On that agenda, we will have Items Two and Three from this morning's agenda, so we have central staff being prepared to comment on that. And we also have the Commerce Bill, which we have central staff, Jeff, prepared to speak to, and thank you, Councilmember Herbald, for your sponsorship of that. And then we will plan to end with the, with the grace of Director Noble. He has agreed to present on the seventh of July, and we appreciate him doing that, wanting to get you guys off of the screen at least by six. Our hope is by 5:30 today. Just in wrapping up, I want to say thank you as well. Thank you to our central staff for their work on this. Thank you to my staff, Sajal, Erin, Farideh, and Aretha for your ongoing work, and really, most importantly, thanks to the entire coalition of folks who've been weighing in with support. I will have more comments to make in our upcoming discussions on Monday. But if you look at our Twitter page, you will see, you know, dozens, almost sixty-plus organizations from housing and homelessness, labor organizations, progressive organizations like Poverty Action and Puget Sound Sage, community resilience organizations, folks from Bird Bar Place and Neighbor Care, Lifelong AIDS, folks from faith organizations and immigrant and refugee rights organizations like One America and Tres Hermanos and Casa Latina, and food access organizations like North Health Line, Operation Lunch Sack, and Food and Water Action, in addition to local businesses and healthcare organizations. So we will talk more about all of those groups when we meet again on Monday. But with that, I just want to thank all of you for your engagement on this opportunity to talk about progressive revenue in the city. And we will take up the other two bills on Items One and Two when we come back from our short break here. With that, and I don't see any additional council colleagues who are raising their hands, seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Strauss?
Aye. Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Herbald?
Aye.
Juarez?
No.
Lewis?
Aye.
Morales?
Aye.
Peterson?
No.
Sawant?
Aye.
Chair Mosqueta?
Aye.
Seven in favor, two opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thanks for all of your work as well. The motion carries, and the amended bill is adopted. This will be on our calendar for full council on Monday, July sixth. And as a reminder, our meeting is not yet over. We will take another recess here, and we will come back at 3:00 PM with full full opportunity to comment. And at 3:30, we will then get into Items Two and Three on our agenda, followed by our discussion on Item Four, which is the Commerce Bill. Thank you, council colleagues. Enjoy your late lunch, and we will see you at 3:00 PM for a public comment.